Counselor Sicala is absent. Counselor Crissati.
Here.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Russo.
Here.
Counselor Antonella.
Here.
And Counselor Angier is absent. Nine members are present, two are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is new business. A is an RFP for the Enfield Annex, so I will turn it over to Matt.
Thank you and good evening. I put together, as you've seen in your packet, a brief spreadsheet PowerPoint that kind of goes over all the page -- well, it doesn't go over all the pages, but it goes to the points that I think I need further input from council to be able to make sure if you want to go forward with a RFP for the annex to see what the next life could be, I need to get a little bit more direction. And so, as we navigate this here, we'll start out, you know, why are we here today? Back in -- geez, when did we start that conversation about the merger of the high schools? Probably 2010, 2011. I mean, it was a lengthy discussion that ultimately led us to finally choosing Enfield High School as the location for the combined high schools. And shortly after the referendum was passed and we started all that work on actually doing the consolidation work and the refurbished to new and the expansion for that, staff started talking about what were we going to do with Fermi High School. You know, from my standpoint, that was going to be as big of a decision as choosing Enfield High for the combined school and moving forward. And it kind of stalled. You know, we had done a overview, kind of a study with Silver Petritelli, looking at what possible uses could be. And at the time, for those who were around, might recall that, you know, we were talking about the library needing to expand and, you know, we were talking about the EMS and what we were doing there because the room at the old Enfield Fire Station just wasn't sufficient for what EMS was doing. And so, there were a lot of, a host of different things that we were thinking about that, you know, could possibly fit into this space. But unfortunately, it kind of stalled and never went, you know, got the momentum of actually looking at it and making some decisions. So, once the schools were -- the school was closed and the students were moved out of Fermi, there was a good direction to go. And I guess what has happened since that timeframe is kind of what our worst-case scenario was, is that we would have this very large building, 220,000 square feet of space, and it would never be used to its fullest amount, and there was always going to be a high cost in ownership of that, right? It's a very large space. You've got to heat it, you've got to cool it, you've got to, you know, fix the different mechanical HVAC systems that are going to break down. It's going to cost a lot of money. As part of this presentation, I was going to get into what those costs were. Unfortunately, a short amount of time and some other priorities coming up, I never was able to dig into it. I had a superficial look at the numbers that have been provided. And those of you that remember me from the past, I always like to do my own analysis. I like to be able to say, these are the numbers that I can live and die by because I put them together. So, I haven't been able to do that for that. But it's something that I do make a commitment to get for you and go through this. But in generality, there is a cost to ownership of a large building. And unfortunately, you know, if not utilize property, it's a cost that will drive us to make bad decisions. And I think one of the things that we're trying to do here is make a good decision. And that's kind of led, I think, to a process that I'll talk about a little bit more once we get through this presentation, that I think makes a lot of sense for the town to commit to. But obviously, there is a lot of cost there to maintain it from, again, electricity, gas, you know, replacing light bulbs, brake fix. We do have activity there. You know, we have a very nice natatorium, pool facility. We have a very nice gymnasium, and we have a lot of people taking advantage of vacant space by storing a lot of items in there. Underutilized, to say the least, but again, I think there is a lot going on there. And, you know, obviously, anybody that either goes into the facility or drives around the facility, you see a lot of deferred capital needs. We know that there's HVA systems that are down and need to be replaced, but there are a host of other things going on over there that, again, are going to cost the town a lot of money. And I think it's hard to commit to spending the type of money you need to spend when you don't have a plan. And I think that's what the start tonight is all about, is coming up with that plan so we can start moving forward and come to a conclusion. And that's the wrong one to push. There we go. So, I put together this RFP, and I know we haven't had any discussions about this, but I've had some discussions with different people. And one of the things that it kind of coalesces is the thought, you know, one, we need to keep control of the pool, we need to keep control of the gymnasium, we need to keep control of the athletic fields. Those obviously are great assets for our community that are being used on a continuous basis, and they bring a lot of value to our residents as well as to the overall town in terms of those services that we can provide. So, it's all those other areas that we have to talk about, you know, what do we foresee that are compatible uses in those facilities that potentially could be done? Obviously, there's a, you know, it's happening within our community now where schools that are no longer used are being turned into residential. And so, I think there's a natural thought that there may be concepts out there turning that area, those floors now that are underutilized, into some type of housing. And again, what I was kind of hearing is maybe looking at 55 and older. I would also say that I wouldn't want to limit us. I think we can go in with a priority concept, but I think we should be open to the concept of other potential uses that we just can't imagine, and for our collective minds, maybe we can't come to grips how it would work. But there are a lot of people out there that have great ideas and potentially have a lot of capital behind them to make things happen. And so, I wouldn't want to limit what that use could be today going into the RFP. So, right now, the way that it's worded is, you know, concepts of 55 and over housing, but I'd recommend maybe we open that up to some other type of uses. And I'd like to get feedback, and this would be a good time to provide me that feedback of what you would be willing to see in that facility related to uses.
Sure. Thank you. I mean, great job doing this. I think this is the exact approach. Instead of doing a study or whatever, it's exactly -- and I agree with you, it's not limited. I mean, look, if you think about what you just said about what we want to keep as a town, which is we've invested a lot of money in the pool and some of the other things now with the pickleball courts. I mean, if you had, again, I know there's been talk of a hospital at some point, but regardless of that, you look at like physical, you know, physical therapy, which is the new, try and avoid surgery, some of those type of offices you have, we could work out a deal with whoever, you know, again, it could be multiple companies, which is, I think, even better. You could put a restaurant. I mean, if you've seen some things across the country, a lot of these old schools are turning into restaurants, little, you know, retail centers. I think you can do it multiple different ways within one building and then work out a deal where they can use the facilities with the town when we're not using, when the soccer teams aren't using, when, you know, the Ramblers aren't using it. I mean, you've got yourself now a community hub where, again, the taxpayers aren't funding it all by themselves. That's the key to me. I'm open to, look, it's just an idea because you already have the pool, you hurt your back, well, here's a beautiful pool, right? You can use it some point. But my point is, and what we talked about after you, when you were gone, is limiting, again, as we talk about, limiting the taxpayer investment here to your right because there's a ton of capital needs. But if the taxpayers, you know, we have the elementary schools we're planning to cover, there's only so much the taxpayers can cover. I think that's why I think it's a great idea, good for you, but I wouldn't limit it to just 55. I agree. I hate to say it, the other thing too with the 55 and over, as you know, the state law, reason why we have, in theory, I'll use the term shortage of senior housing, because they allow non-seniors into our senior housing that we already have to occupy, which is a big, another big issue that I think, let's not run into it there if we can avoid it. But if it's the best offer, then great, right? Because this, for me, I think there's, you know, us holding, you know, some of the amenities, and who knows, maybe you can get someone to come out of a science contractor who's into science and redo all the planetarium, who knows? But I understand there's a lot of issues with the planetarium, but I mean, it's an idea, right?
Yep.
I mean, and so, I think, I don't want to limit it. I appreciate what you're doing here. I think it's a great start, and I won't be around, so I wish you the best when I come in.
I just want to be clear, but you want the town to keep ownership of the pool.
Correct.
But we would do a joint because I don't want people to get the --
No, sorry, right, yeah.
Right, right. So, I agree with Mike. I think we should take off all the guardrails. Let's see what is out there. But the conditions, and I think all of us agree, if we don't, please speak up, that the pool must stay with the town, the gym, possibly the auditorium, one wing for -- what am I thinking of?
Recreation.
Recreation. And then, all the parking lots to the right-hand side where the new pickleball courts are going in, and all the fields would remain the town's. Now, if it is, if it is an over 55, they're welcome to use, you know, some joint use, share with us, help offset the costs of them. I mean, the elderly walking on the track, swimming in the pool, pickleball inside in the gym, it's already there now. That's the only reason I think over 55 was brought up is because a lot of the amenities for the elderly are already there. But again, like Mike, because when we were driving here, I was talking with Mike, and he brought up medical offices, physical therapy, and I had never thought of that. And, you know, you see all these PAs out there now, and, you know, they're little satellite doctors' offices, but they work out of the hospitals. So, I mean, that was a great idea, and, you know, residents may have other ideas. So, I'm open to just go with it, and as long as the terms are that we maintain either ownership or control of those things that are at the property. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
And it's funny when Mike said that because I know of a facility in Manchester called Vale that just opened up, and they took an old factory, and they've turned it into an indoor soccer facility, there's a brewery, there's, my son-in-law's physical therapies company is there, office is there. So, again, it opens up a wide variety, but this is the start because we don't know who's out there, who's watching, who's going to give us some ideas. I'm in full agreement, we need to keep the recreational facilities, the fields, the pool, but I think this could be a true partnership. And I really think, again, we just need to have the guardrails down, let's see what comes up. I think people can be creative on this. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, for initiating the RFP for the use of the annex. I like the concept of possible housing, all right? The concept of, you know, medical buildings or physical therapy buildings, I wasn't even thinking along that lines. I was thinking more along the lines of, you know, public safety, you know, possibility of, you know, EMS, you know, our police department. And the reason why I'm saying that is due to the real act of police training that goes on over at the annex, all right? And I'm also concerned, you know, our health department utilizes part of this building also. So, in terms of, you know, thinking of, you know, public safety, and then that other section, you know, our DPW utilizes quite a bit of that front side, on the other side of the, where the pool is underneath, you know, they utilize a large part of that building. You know, so, we think of, you know, putting out an RFP, then we start thinking about, you know, we have to think of DPW, we're going to think of the police department, we're going to think about adult education. We've already talked about the alternative high school, so that's not even an issue. But, you know, they're going to, you know, be displaced and they're going to have to find other areas. So, you know, the building's used quite a bit, you know, so, you know, I think the public really doesn't know, you know, in terms of, you know, how much the building is being used. You know, it's not being used at 100% capacity, but pretty close that building's being used quite a bit. But once again, there are creative developers out there, and who knows what somebody creatively could come up with, you know? And so, you know, we look back when these fields were even done before, you know, with the chemicals there, you know? So, I know part, if nothing comes back, well, we're going to think about maybe, you know, leveling the building and looking at it for athletic fields. So, you know, we have to look at, like, the total picture of, you know, is the soil compatible, you know, for that? Or if somebody comes in, you know, is the soil already tested so that they, you know, are going to be stuck with, you know, something? But, you know, to be open and flexible to somebody's creativity with the building, you know, I think, you know, it's something that we could be, you know, open to. But as long as, if somebody comes in and they're very creative, as long as we're able to take care of these other major parts of the use of this building, that people aren't displaced and say, where are we going to be?
Yeah. I think that's one of the difficulties in all this is that there are a lot of moving parts to the decisions ultimately you as council are going to have to make about this building, right?
Right.
And I think, you know, we've started some of that pre-planning. You know, obviously, we're working to relocate the IT department back over here to Town Hall, which opens up floor space over to Alcorn so they can move one of the uses there. And so, we obviously have time right now to start, you know, putting those plans into action. One of the things that we're doing as well is we're trying to get a good understanding of all the storage that's over there and who's utilizing it and, you know, the what-if. I mean, right now, if I would go to Sheila and say, hey, we've sold the building, we have to get everything out of there tomorrow, she's probably, after she throws things at me, saying, I'm out. So, you know, it can't be, we just have it happen. I mean, there's going to have to be a lot of work to get us there. And so, we understand that there's a potential of something happening there, and we have to commit ourselves to saying, something is going to happen there. And so, we have to start making all those, you know, all those ancillary moves that are going to lead us to be, have that ability to make something happen.
And I am all for keeping that front part, you know, town-owned along with the athletic fields and the pool. I'm in agreement with that, the rec. department, you know, that wing that's over, I don't even know what the letter is, but.
Sure.
You know, it's utilized and, you know, that's where our rec. department is now.
Yep.
Right. And even with that thought, Bob, the rec. department's only a one-story wing, right? So, I mean, maybe we, if the RFP comes back, we take a two-story wing, which would help utilize some of the other programming and storage that's in the facility, but like, I mean, I think we all agree, without going out and seeing what the ideas are, you know, it's open.
Creativity.
Yeah. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. These are all great suggestions and thank for all your hard work, Matt. We also cannot forget the kids camp in the summer and all the programs that they offer through our town, because something that has to be on the forefront as well. But pretty much my question with respect to the RFP, we're looking at either long-term lease or a direct sale. Will that be presented in the RFP, that language, or do we leave it open?
I think you're jumping ahead. So, we're only at this part. I have further questions for you that I think if we can get to this evening, I'm asking that very question because I want to make sure these are things that you're comfortable with and understand kind of what my mindset is, why I wrote what I wrote. So, that's coming up. I mean, as soon as we can move on from this, I don't know if it's the next slide or within the next two slides, we ask that question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And so, another thing that I want you to be okay with, the town seeks to identify qualified developer or development team, whether for-profit or nonprofit. Again, I didn't know if you wanted to limit it to a for-profit only. I bring this up, and I know at the groundbreaking the other day, some of you may have had a conversation with the Enfield Housing Authority. I had a similar conversation in an introductory meeting with the director, and I had thrown out there, I said, hey, you know, we have this, we're thinking of putting an RFP out, is that something that you might be interested in looking at? And if so, I will send, you know, as soon as we put this out, I will send it to you and you can take a look at it. So, I think there's going to be nonprofits that could be interested in doing something there, so I would want to keep it open, and that's why I put that language in there, either-or. And then, the, you know, the last piece of this that I wanted to talk about is, you know, full or partial adaptive reuses, selective demolition, and compatible new construction. So, again, I don't want to put something in the RFP that you're not comfortable with because sure is all being, if there's something in there you didn't like and I allow it, that's the one that's going to be the best one. And I'd rather not pursue that in any way or get people interested if they're not going to be able to do that.
Councilman Antonella.
So, my comment here, and I think it goes for probably all the questions that you're going to ask us tonight, when we discuss this in leadership and iteratively over time, is that in doing this, we want the biggest net possible to see all the possibilities and be able to have the most options to choose from. So, I mean, I don't know what other people are going to think, but I think the more we limit ourselves, the more we end up not being able to find the best use. So, to the extent that we can, that we can keep that, the bigger the net, the better. And so, I would just suggest keeping the most inclusive language in throughout the rest of the, this and throughout the rest of the RFP, because I think that's my comment.
And I would agree. As long as it has the language in there about the pool and everything else, I mean, if they want to tear the rest of the building down and, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, I want to just, yeah, quantify. We have been very clear about what we want to keep, and I think it's more important here that we specify what's not included.
Right.
Than trying to steer design direction or our opportunities in the rest of the RFP. Our needs, what we need to remain, I think we're universally agreed on, and I think you've done a good job maintaining that. So, the rest of it, like I said, should just be as broad as possible.
Agreed. Anyone else? Continue.
So, then, in the next slide, again, I wanted to make sure, and it's sounding like I already know the answer to this, but, you know, there is going to be a difficulty in the concept of having one structure there, right? And I think in the end, there is probably going to end up being some type of ground lease, lease or something along those lines that we end up with if we go with the building stays. You know, if the idea is that the structure stays for the most part, I don't think you'd be willing to sell the property underneath the building. However, if the concept is selective demolition and there's a way to do that outparcelling of it, I would say we would want to be open to that. And so, again, I tried to craft, you know, the language so we kind of set the table saying, it's probably going to be a lease, but depending upon what it is you propose, we're willing to consider that. And so, that's what this slide is all about, is make sure that, again, you're open to these concepts so I can safely put them in there, and if we get that, you know, you won't be saying, Koppeler, what were you thinking? We don't agree with that at all.
So, for a developer to go in and redevelop the property, tear it down, build new, they're not going to get a mortgage on a ground lease.
Yeah.
So, they would have to take ownership of it. And again, that is something that, putting that language in there, I don't want to scare away 98% of the people because, you know, with a little work, I think we could separate what we want to keep from the existing building, and they could tear down the rest of the building. And that's why, you know, the line, the lot line would include what we've said, and the rest would be theirs to do whatever they wanted to do with it. So, I mean, even like condos or planned unit developments, you know, the line that we put through the building, that's theirs, this is ours, and so.
Okay. And again, I'm trying to keep it kind of flexible because, you know, there may be, you know, ideas out there that, and I agree about the financing piece, but there may be some out there that actually, you know, a lease is a better alternative for them. So, again, wanted to keep it open. Let me just say, and I didn't know if I was going to say it in the slide before this slide, but I think we know what the assets are and what we want to keep. I think we shouldn't treat that as the end, though, because there could be concepts that they come in and say, you know, if we just demoed everything, you know, and we can provide to you these amenities in, you know, the bigger thing, be open to that idea. I doubt we'll see like that, but I have seen other places where you get the right developer, and I'm thinking of a couple different projects in Ohio where, you know, the cities were pretty adamant, you know, we want to keep this. And the developer comes in and says, well, you don't want to keep it because I can build you a brand-new one, and you can have that. So, you just never know. And so, I want to keep that open, but we're not necessarily going to lead with that. I mean, we're going to focus on, we want to keep these. And again, if someone has a great idea and can pull it off, we've got to listen to it.
But I don't think anybody's saving here is willing to trade an indoor pool for an outdoor pool.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I understand, but at least they know what we're looking to have at that property.
And then, I think the last piece of this is really the minimum bid. Again, in it, I, there is no minimum bid. I think you're going to see maybe a lot of variances, should we get a number of them on what this would be. And so, I would recommend we not do that, but if you feel that we should have a minimum bid, now's the time to say so, so I can put it in there.
Well, I'm just going to say, from your last statement, if somebody comes in and they're willing to build a new gym, you know, put up 20,000 square feet of office space for us, a brand-new pool, I mean, they bid, so I don't think we should put a minimum bid. You know, I think it's the best fit for this property, it's going to be so difficult. Right. We all in agreement? We're all in agreement?
Okay, great. And then, I guess, maybe one more slide here, is about the tax incentives and abatements. You know, are you comfortable with language being placed in there that this is something that we could consider if the project's right?
I wouldn't even bring it up. That's how I feel. I mean.
Well, I agree. I don't see any to put it in there.
They'll come to us.
Okay.
Yeah, the last word.
Oh, yeah, and that's, I mean, I think, I probably wouldn't put this in a RFP if we were talking about a greenfield site, right? Because we don't want to necessarily, and to me, what this is doing is just saying that, listen, we understand that this is not necessarily going to be an easy, cost-effective project for you, you know, and we're willing to be a partner. Now, I can change that, and I think in this particular section, you know, I have wording to that effect that, you know, we want to be a partner, and I can leave out, you know, this portion without any problem. you know, this portion without any problem, but I didn't know if you wanted to, you know, put that out there or not, so. Okay.
Not at this point. What's it, Cindy?
Okay. So that was all the questions. I mean, I know it's a lot longer document, but those are really the the heart and soul of what, it's all on the first page. You know, the rest is really just supporting material that kind of reinforces, and I can go through most of that and take out any of the the things that are contradictory to what we talked tonight, so that's not a big deal. If you want to move forward, I would safely say that we'd be putting this out in October, looking at probably December-ish to get those back. I want to give at least, you know, a month and a half for people to consider it, maybe even two months. I'm I'm kind of going back and forth that. We don't want to rush it and and people not submit because it was too tight of a deadline. And if we kind of stick to that, I would expect sometime, you know, late December, most likely in January, where we'd be coming back to council with what those submissions would be.
Councilman Santinella.
So I would question whether or not that's enough time.
Yeah.
I, October is end of the year, it gets into the holidays and end of year timeframe. I'm just not sure that that's enough time for, given what we know about this building and some of the complexities with it, I would just advocate giving more time. I mean, if you if you had more time, what would be the maximum amount of time that you would be comfortable with?
I I would say the first part of January. I mean, again, I I think that, you know, in in these type of projects, the the hardest part really is getting the the interest. I mean, so when you put it out, let's say if we put it out October 1st, you know, to get traction, you're probably two weeks later before people are really seeing it.
Yep.
Right? So it takes a little bit of time. You know, most likely, the way this would be done by a developer, they're not going to be investing a lot of, you know, time and effort into it. They're going to have a concept and and maybe, you know, have a little bit of work done, which is, you know, six weeks worth of work.
Yep. So now. Just go back to, you know, our original intent here is to get the most options possible. And if an extra four weeks is going to help us get more options, then I think I'd rather give us the extra four weeks than to shorten the time and, you know, because this, because of the scale of the project. That would just be my suggestion.
So if we went out the end of October and we did eight weeks, that puts us January 1st. I mean, eight weeks is a long time because as a as a developer, you're not going to spend, you're going to spend very little on just putting a concept together to see if the town's even interested. I think eight eight weeks is enough. It gets us to the beginning of January. And then, you know, the second week or second meeting in January or first meeting in February, we have the meeting, or whoever the council is, has the meeting at that time, you know? Go ahead, Mike.
You, will there be parts, again, some RFPs, you sort of have a conference, you know? I think that's not a bad idea to sort of go along John's idea, to see what interest you have. I agree, it's a fine line. If you do it too quick, again, I'll just say, when we do, our line of business, if it's a quick RFP, we don't think they're serious, right?
Or they have someone lined up.
Right, or if it's too long, right, it then it's like, well, okay, you know, why are they even doing this?
Yeah.
Right? So I agree, eight weeks seems like a good balance, as long as you're having some sort of conference, or I don't, you want to call it, sometimes we call it bidders conference, depending on your, what you bid. Say, hey, look, yeah, this is what, and the council's really, so they know they're interested and they're going to give you some viable, even if it's, hey, this is my conceptual idea, which is just as good as someone giving you, you know.
Yeah. One of, one of the things that, again, it's in the RFP is, and and just tentatively put some dates on this, just so you can kind of see what I think the timeframes are at that. I want to say it's early part of November, you know, like the 15th or so, we would have this ability for people to walk through the facility. And so again, my my thinking is that, you know, we get this out onto the street, again, give it a couple of weeks for traction, you know, we should start seeing people asking questions at that point. And so having that that date in early to mid-November, people will start having the ideas with that. And 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 so that's kind of my thought process of why I I chose those dates.
I'll just say, no matter whatever the eight weeks, my suggestion, and I can just say from experience, do not have it due January 1st.
Right, yeah.
Do it before the holiday or do it a week after.
Yeah.
I could just tell you, I don't care what line of business you are, most of those companies, folks aren't working, and it just adds a level of, for the bidders, potential bidders, anxiety they're not looking for at that time. I'm just saying, so I'm just saying, whatever your, I agree with the eight weeks, but if you have to get a little extra to balance it, I have to say January 6th, if it, whatever, whenever the RFP goes out, just keep that in mind, because again, that that week between Christmas and January, no one's putting in.
Yeah. So if if, you know, we we go on the shorter timeframe, you know, you lose about a week and a half for Thanksgiving. So it would be probably the first or second week in December. If you look at the longer one, I would agree, that would be the week after
I think that's correct.
January 1st to do that. And again, I I I don't think either of those dates, you would go wrong. So.
First week in January?
If you wanted to go.
I'll just defer whenever you have the RFP ready.
Yeah.
First week in January is fine, January 6th or 7th, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's, and and it's pretty much, you know, I I want to go through it again just to make sure, make sure we have formatting and all the dates right, but it's it's pretty much ready to go. And my my anticipation was we'd be releasing it the first week in October, so.
Beautiful. Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of go over this, you know, this obviously is the first step in determining the future of the annex. During this timeframe, we're not just going to sit back and wait, you know, as I said earlier, we need to be looking at, okay, what are, what are those steps that if we do get a home run here with this RFP, that we're going to have to take? At the same time, we have to start thinking about the what if, if we don't get anything? And I I think there are some really good ideas that as a town, we can pursue. And so we need to really start thinking about that. And as I said here, you know, looking at it as a very large recreation-based park is is an option. But I think it kind of goes against maybe what some of you are saying is, you know, we don't want to solve this necessarily on the backs of our residents. You know, we want to get a partner to come in and do that, so that's what our first priority is. But at the same time, I think we have to be realistic. If we don't get that, we're going to have to come up with a creative solution of our own making and and do it in a way that, again, makes it a great asset for the community and do it in a very cost-effective way. And so we have to be looking at those those different outcomes. You know, I've had projects, other places, where, you know, I say, this is what our thought process is, but if something comes along that is really great and everyone looks at it and says, this is an incredible thing to be a part of, we have to scrap that and and go with what, you know, our guts are telling us on that great project. So just keep an open mind as we go along, and we have to, as staff, keep that open mind and look at the different alternatives for the the, this project. And and just, you know, the the last part there, if no viable projects come out of the RFP, you know, council, we, you know, need to develop that concept. It can't be, oh, well, we tried. You know, I I think, for those of you that were around for the number of years with Higgins, I think, you know, we tried a lot of different concepts, right? But there were a lot of constraints. And and the end result, what you have today, I think, is a great outcome for that project. But it wasn't council saying, we couldn't do anything. You know, in the end, council said, we have to do something. And I think that's the resolve we have to have with this project as well, is that at the end, we have to do something. So.
Good. Anyone else? Mike?
Just, where would be, where is the RFP placed? So for this question, like, Western Massachusetts, I'm assuming will know that, I mean, a lot of, there's been, in the past, colleges interested in that areas as well, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, that that is, you know, as I was putting this together, you know, the, I was thinking about, how are we going to place this? And and I don't have a complete understanding of that yet
Okay.
Because I was too busy writing it.
Yeah.
But but I agree that we can't just put it on our website and put it out in, you know, the normal places that we do it. We have to come up with a a plan on how to get this out to the right people. And and I think there's some ways to do that, I just, I haven't had a chance really to think through the whole strategy to do that. But but we need to do it.
Yep.
I mean, it can't just be, we put it on the website and keep our fingers crossed.
Anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of September 15th, 2025 to order. Can we rise for a prayer or moment of silence from Councilman Crissati?
Good evening. Before we begin to begin tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the events and emotions that weigh heavily on our community. First, our hearts go out to the family, friends, and coworkers of Jamie Nickerson, a dedicated town employee who tragically lost his life in a recent accident. Jamie served this community with commitment and care, and his loss is deeply felt across our town. We extend our sincerest condolences to all who knew and loved Jamie. We are also mourning the passing of a dear friend, Tim Jensen, a respected local jurist and a familiar presence in Enfield. Tim had a gift for telling the stories of our town with clarity, compassion, and integrity. We also extend our condolences to his family. He will be greatly missed by many also. As we come together in civic service, we also must take a moment to firmly and unequivocally condemn all forms of political violence. Our democracy depends on peaceful exchange of ideas, mutual respect, and a shared commitment to the rule of law. There is no place in our community or our country for violence or intimidation in the political process. May we have a moment of silence. Thank you. On a bright, on a brighter note, we also want to extend a warm welcome back to our students, teachers, and staff as the new school year begins. We are proud of our students and grateful for the educators and families who help shape the future of Enfield every day. We wish you a safe, successful, and inspiring year ahead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Councilor Crissati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nisuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
And Councilor Ungayr.
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire or an emergency, there are two means to exit the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors or walk a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, and out the rear doors of the building. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 21st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in second. Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And the regular meeting of July 21st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. And the special meeting of July 30th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. And tonight, we have three special guests, and we will start with the Board of Education. I see the chairman, Charlotte Riley, is here, and Superintendent of Schools, Steve Macchio. Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. This is going to be a much shorter
This is going to be a much shorter presentation that we come to related to budget than the last time I was in front of you. I think that was four hours. This one should be, I don't know, four minutes, maybe. So basically, we just come to get, we come here this evening because we want to give you an update to the end of fiscal year '25. So as you see, I put together a memo that's been sent to Mr. Copley. We've been in discussions regarding the end of fiscal year '25 in terms of where we stand and where we ended up. So the entire budget for the Board of Education last year was $77,429,555. When we ended, we were able to, not able to, but due to unfortunate circumstances of openings and vacant positions and things of that nature, we had greater than 2% of a budget at the end of the year. So we opened up a non-lapsing unexpended fund for the Board of Education. We shifted 2% of our budget balance into an account which will be directly deposited into that account. And then when all of that was taken care of, we still had $41,041.47. That was on the rolls, if you will, still. So what I have brought here this evening in terms of the memo is, as well as the memo, a check, which Mr. Copley now has. That check will represent a portion of our next payment that would be made back to the town of Enfield for the MOU. The memo details the original MOU balance that was lent to the Board of Education, as well as the payments that we've made to date. So you have an original balance of just over $1.7 million. We did have some benefits come back from Sterling benefits, so we put that towards it. We provided a check last May for our, really, our first payment, which should be this year, but we paid it out of last year's funds. And then you have this check here for the little over $41,000. So according to my tally, using a calculator, we have $1,289,864.77 that would be paid out over the course of the next five years.
And I just wanted to add, you know, we walked into a very difficult situation. Mr. Longey and the cabinet put many, many, many hours in to get the budget at the beginning of last fiscal year, ready to go. And we only started out with a few thousand dollars in our 2% account. And throughout the year, obviously through not being able to hire people and all of that, but also unturning every single stone and going through everything with Lorena and the superintendent, we got back into a decent situation, and we are moving forward. And we have a plan, motivation, and we're ready to rise up. So I hope this brings a small smile to everybody's faces that, you know, we turned a situation from not so great to pretty decent.
And I would just close by saying, obviously, when I came on board as the superintendent, I had said that I was going to be as transparent as possible when it came to the budget. And I think that this continues to do that. I could have provided you with just the memo. I could have come in and provided Matt with a check and not told you anything about it. But I also provided you with our year-to-date budget summary. I'm a firm believer, if we go in the red in particular lines, we leave those in the red because we want to know actually what we spent versus doing budget transfers to cover it up. So you have everything. That is actually what we had spent related to the budget. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so. That's my four minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Charlotte. For clarification, 2% of your budget is how much money?
Well, in the memo, it states. Excuse me.
Okay. And that is money that you can use from last year's budget to carry over to this year's budget, but you wouldn't use it on fixed costs?
It's money that gets placed into a non-lapsing unexpended fund for when major emergencies or unbeknownst expenses come about. So we, it gives us another means to go to rather than coming back to town council and asking for additional funding.
Right. I'm just trying to, for people listening, because you just said it again, and very hard to understand, it's extra money you're able to carry over from one year to the next. You're allowed to carry 2% over. I want to say, Andy and Charlotte, amazing. You took a $6 million deficit. You were very conservative, probably too conservative, and you turned it into a million-six positive. And that's something very hard to do. So I want to thank both of you and the entire Board of Education for the hard work. A lot of tough decisions were made last year that had to be made to get us on the right path. Steve, I think you're heading and continuing down that path. I know the beginning of the school year was a little rocky with the buses, but I personally know everybody who contacted me, that I referred to you. You resolved the issues, which is huge. You returned phone calls, got back to everybody. And I have to say, for the first time in many, many years, when I pass a school bus, there's kids in it. So again, congratulations to all of you. I know it was a team effort, and it was something that the town really had a hard time going through, but if you're watching the news now, it's happening all over the country. So we hit it head-on, dealt with it, and now let's move beyond it and do the best we can do for our children. Mike?
Again, thank you for being here, too. And again, I'll say, to your point on transparency, funny transparency is a word that people throw around, like collaboration, words that, you know, synergy is another one. But I think it's interesting. So when you do run into, there's, look, there's bumps in every budget. There's, no matter how well you budget, to your point, things happen. And but when you do it this way, now you've gotten things back under control, you can handle those things when, hey, maybe we're short on something, right? People will believe you because, hey, look, you're being straightforward about it. So I appreciate you taking this tact. It's much different. It's refreshing, to be honest with you. And again, good news, you folks balance, I mean, I may, I love a balanced budget. There's nothing better than hearing the term balanced budget. And the 2% is your money to use, to your point, to use. It's a contingency fund, just like we have our contingency fund, and you manage things, again, anticipating things that may happen, may not happen. My only question, I'll say, and I thank Charlotte, yourself, Steve, of course, Andy, who really, you know, took the bull by the horn when we went through this a year and a half ago, and all his staff. At the time, you don't have to give me the answer. You were talking about we were conservative on special ed. The special ed was one of the drivers at the time of why we were behind. Just curious if you've already done this, the assumption that were made back when we had that presentation about a year and a half ago, how'd they come in? Meaning, you know, was it the better tact of how to budget versus how it was happened in the past where, again, obviously, you budgeted the right way, you're in a balanced budget? But just curious, is that, that approach is going to continue to happen with special ed, understanding the very, you know, the via, you know, how, you know, there's, it fluctuates depending on what we get for students? State continuing not to cover the full 100% cost? You know, so, I mean, that's a variable in your budget. Like, again, just curious if, how you're approaching it as Andy did a year and a half ago? Is that how you're going to kind of handle it going forward? Admittedly, being a little conservative with your budget, knowing you don't want to be in a deficit.
Yeah. So, and a couple of different people have said it, and really, the thanks for where this budget landed isn't with me. Yeah, I'll take all credit for next year's budget or for this current year's budget, but Andy did do all of the hard work. Andy had all of the difficult position, all of the difficult decisions to be made. Never easy to lay somebody off, but the numbers that he had to do, a position I never hoped to have to be in. Related to special education, we will continue to budget on the extremely conservative side. Excess cost reimbursement is anticipated to come in at a particular dollar amount. We always undersell it. I'm a firm believer, and we're not going to get what we're promised, only because a set dollar amount is provided in the state budget, and then as excess cost reimbursements are sent in, if it's above that dollar amount that they were anticipating, well, then that's less of a percentage you're going to get back. As we know, special education costs are going through the roof everywhere. So I would fully anticipate that those numbers will continue to go up, and that means our percentage reimbursement will continue to come down. We do look at every child, the way we budget is we child, we budget by the child, where they're going, where their, what their needs would be, and we look at what those placements would be, what the transportation costs would be. I will say, as we go into next year, it's going to be interesting because depending on what happens in November, and we've had this conversation with Mr. Copley about the charter changes with us having to be even earlier, I'm not going to have many of those numbers, so I'm going to only be able to take, you know, educated guesses in terms of what the percentage increases will be. But we're always going to go on the conservative side. Special education is the most volatile account line in the entire budget. One child moves in.
I think by you guys being upfront about it and then what you're assuming, again, it's the right approach to be upfront with the public. And again, sorry, look, it's a huge unfunded state mandate. Let's call it what it is. And it's not part of their budget. It's not 100% covered as it should be. So that's the risk you have to take. And I think as long as people understand that, which I think you did a good job, I think that was sort of the big, one of the biggest issues we dealt with, whoever's running the show, continue to do that so people understand, to your point, the volatility of it isn't going away. And unfortunately, there's going to be, you're right, if we actually do your budget a little earlier, there's some risk in there. So again, thank you. Great job. And again, I think you folks did a great job in the last year and a half, taking what was a huge deficit and turning it into a positive. So congratulations to everyone involved.
Just one question. There was an audit that is going on, and I'm just wondering if we have an update of when that's going to be done?
That would be a question you can give to Mr. Wilcox. The audit has completed all of its interviews as required by the Board of Education. They interviewed over a dozen of us for different periods of time. We completed that, I think the last person was Andy maybe a week or two ago, and now it's just a matter of what their findings would be.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could, I'll address that. I was going to say that in my comments. I had a conversation with the firm doing that. Steve said they completed their interviews. They're anticipating by the end of this month, they'll have a draft that they'll be able to provide to us. So that's currently where we stand.
Thank you for your hard work, your staff's hard work. These are difficult times, but I also want to applaud you on your cognitive ability to reach those special needs students. That's extremely important. Your staff is doing a phenomenal job, and thank you for keeping special education in the forefront. It is much appreciated. Education in itself is difficult, but when you are dealing with those students that have difficulties in any of the areas, your staff is going above and beyond, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Thank you both very, very much. And later in the budget, hopefully, we're returning some of that $40,000 towards high school sports and the dugouts at Powder Hollow.
That would be awesome.
Be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, we have Constitution Week, and Cindy Mangini will read a proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution. Cindy? No, up there. But I was going to give you the microphone. Cindy?
Cindy.
My sisters, my daughters. My mouth isn't loud enough?
Oh, okay.
That's questionable. So this is Constitution Week, and we have a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the town of Enfield. Whereas, more than two centuries after our founding fathers gathered on September 17th, 1787, in Philadelphia, our nation continues to be guided by the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas the Constitution of the United States reflects our ideals and establishes a practical system of government, provides three separate branches, the legislative, the executive, and the judicial. And whereas the Constitution protects the rights of our citizens and maintains the rule of law. And whereas during Constitution Week, we reaffirm our commitment to its stated purposes to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Now therefore, I, Ken Nelson, Jr., mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, and the entire community, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the town of Enfield, and encourage the citizens of Enfield to honor the achievements of our founders while taking time to reflect on the rights and privileges of our citizenship. And it is signed by our mayor, Ken Nelson, Jr., September 17th, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, mayor, and town council members and everyone else who listed. I did speak last year in Constitution Week, but I have a brief little statement that I'd like to make. I want to thank you as the Regent of the Penelope Terry Abbey Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Want to thank you for recognizing Constitution Week and celebrating the Constitution's 238th anniversary. In 1955, the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a resolution to observe this week for the foundation of the American form of government. The resolution was officially enacted by President Eisenhower on August 2nd, 1956. President George W. Bush officially declared the inception of Constitution Week in 2002. The observance runs, as you stated, annually from September 17th through September 23rd. The commitment of the DAR is to encourage study and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17th, 1987. The 100-day debate known as the Constitutional Convention was one of the most momentous occurrences in U.S. history. The events that took place would set the course towards becoming what we know as the United States of America. The Committee of Detail was a committee established at the convention to create a draft reflecting the agreements made at the convention. It was chaired by John Rutledge from South Carolina. The other members included Edmund Randolph from Virginia, James Wilson from Pennsylvania, and Nathaniel Gorm from Massachusetts, and our own very, our very own Oliver Ellsworth from Windsor, Connecticut. Oliver and Roger Sherman created what is known as the Connecticut Compromise. This is the agreement that large and small states reached and established the two-house legislation structure. Oliver also proposed the name "the United States" to identify the government under the authority of the Constitution. The DIA is honored to own the home of the founding father and make it available to the public in Windsor, obviously. And taking note that Enfield has an amazing history, it really, really does. The Penelope Terry Abbey Chapter has been working hard at recognizing its history. Kelly Davis is in charge and spearheading of the refurbishment of our own Thomas Abbey statue. In addition, we have members that are taking care of the Jonathan Edward Stone. You've also seen that little plaque, the boulder has been removed for refurbishing as well. And we're hoping that these projects that we're all involved in help Enfield celebrate America 250. And thank you again from our chapter.
Thank you very much.
And they got a lot of work going on, Thomas Abbey. That's a big project that Kelly Davis has been spearheading, and I want to just say she's doing a wonderful job. It's very difficult to get a simple phone call back from contractors nowadays, but she keeps fighting it, and she's doing great. So thank you. So thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the America 250 Proclamation, where the Deputy Mayor Pisner will read that.
Do you want to come up with me, Lori? I know you're on it.
Come back up, Kelly. It ain't getting out that easy.
I'm the liaison. Should I get up there and tell you?
No. You had your show.
Americas, whereas, the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the formation of the United States of America will occur on July 4, 2026. And whereas, the Town of Enfield founded in 1683, has contributed proudly and significantly to the history of our nation and our state for more than 342 years. And whereas, in 2016, the United States Congress established by joint resolution, the America 250 Commission, to encourage observance of the 250 years of our nation's existence. And whereas, the Governor established Connecticut's Semi-Quintennial Commission, an Executive Order 22-02. And the Commission has determined its mission and purpose is to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive celebration, commemoration, and observance of the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence through civic, cultural, and historical education, events, and programming. And whereas, the Commission will enhance tourism, economic development, history, and civic education, historic preservation, and outdoor recreation within the state. And whereas, America 250, Connecticut, will engage Connecticut residents in all 169 municipalities through local 250th committees and affiliate organizations through its culmination in And whereas, preserving, studying, and enjoying state history strengthens communities, builds pride, and forges bonds between Connecticut residents as we work together toward the goal of equity and recognition of the unattainable, un... alienable... I'm sorry. Un... This word's going to get me. You got it. Rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, it is appropriate that Enfield engages fully with our past and looks forward a shared future. And whereas, the Mayor and City Council of Enfield thus encourage its citizens to create and participate in programs that will commemorate the history of Enfield, our state, and our nation. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ken Nelson, Nelson Jr., do hereby proclaim that Enfield will fully engage in commemorative activities leading up to and through July 4, 2026. I urge all community members to take advantage of the resources available from America 250 Commission, the Connecticut Semi-Quintennial Commission, and the America 250 Coordinating Committee of Enfield to observe the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence by coordinating commemorative events, planning historical activities, providing opportunities for public discourse, creating new scholarship around Connecticut's complete history, creating new educational opportunities, and by seeking opportunities for historic preservation, Enfield pledges to uplift, support, and generate commemorative opportunities. Thank you. Signed, Ken Nelson, Jr.
Mayor.
This is why he gave it to me. Who am I giving this to? I'm going to give it to you.
I would like to thank you all for the time that you volunteer to help move these committees forward. Councilman Mangini, I know you are on the ball with these committees. You donate a lot of time. Councilman Ungeyer, truly amazing, and I can't look for, I can't wait to look forward and see what you guys are working for on America 250, with Emily being part of it and everybody else. I know it's going to be great. So thank you very much to all the volunteers. Next, we're going to move on to public communication. Here are the rules for public communication. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communication, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct, and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. Who would like to come up and speak this evening? Ma'am in the back?
This ma'am or that ma'am?
That ma'am in the corner.
I have come before the council today to voice my concerns for budgetary decisions that have continued to be made, as well as more public awareness for our town's financial issues for those who do not have or follow me on, follow the Facebook forum. I think it was very refreshing to have the Board of Ed and his budget, who is finally under control. But here, let's get started with town financials. Our town's current financial situation did not happen in the last few years, but a result of over 20 years, the financial mismanagement, corruption, and budgetary manipulation. Honesty and accountability would have stopped this. Instead, financials and meeting minutes have become more vague, and information requiring more research requests and information from the town, which should be readily available. The proverbial can has been kicked all the way down the road. The budgetary manipulation has siphoned all that it can into the priorities of the council. The 2024 budget discussions were eye-opening to anybody who watched them. After Enfield had another 15 seconds of shame from devastating school cuts and a council member's unchecked anger outburst with appalling comments that should have asked for removal. I look at this as a turning point, though. Over the last year, decisions are often referred to as a best-for-Enfield or the town, disregarding taxpayers are at the top. You are to make votes for us and the best financial decisions for us. That is who you are here to represent and to vote on behalf of us. The decisions made while we pay astronomical taxes, have failing infrastructure, can't even fund our schools adequately, provide regular maintenance, or even our sports fields maintained, should have everybody concerned. Everyone is asking, why are we being taxed out of this town? Where is all the money going? Let's look at the budgets from 2020 to 2024. Remember, there's a flat fund budget. No mill increase means no increases. But instead, total expenditures for the town manager increased 138% in five years, with 23% salary increase for 2025 and a 14% projected salary increase for this year, which actually was higher because it wasn't enough. There was $54,000 in stipends and other compensation paid for town clerk. Salaries for assistant town clerk increased 29% in 2025. Human resources expenditures increased 36% in that time. Finance assessment and revenue collection increased 51%, with salaries and benefits increasing 48%. Finance and general services increased 50%. Building inspection, 48%. Police services, purchased property services lined item increased 92%. Other purchase services, 134%. Supplies, materials, 124%. Property, 74% increase, and $525,000 from the fund balance to purchase police cruisers. Planning and development expenditures increased 97%. Purchased professional technical services had $125 budgeted, but showed zero for actuals. And in the following budget, it showed it was $117,000 spent. So there, if you didn't see both budgets, it misrepresents. Economic development, $40,000 in total expenditures, with an adopted $20,000 miscellaneous purchase, when $20,000 was cut from the historic society. Boards and commissions, which support economic development, 140% total expenditure increase since 2020. And at one time, talk about transparency, not just the word, but at one time, those boards, commissions had blind budget items in our budget. But yet, non-town agencies decreased $4,000, the ones to help our most vulnerable residents. And water pollution control expenditures increased 84%. Additionally, developmental services is missing a lined item for $22,000 not shown in the budget. They ran a deficit of $121,000 in three years. Code enforcement got $29,000 in stipends for part-time employees. The town attorney salary and benefits increased 6.86% in 2025 and 60% this year. These increases in the budget are used to maneuver money and put it for expenditures that weren't originally budgeted.
Katie?
I hear you.
You can come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. voice my concerns, and I highly recommend my fellow citizens to do the same. The restaurant in question has only been open for a year, and prior to that, the space has been vacant for more than a year. On May 5, the restaurant was too busy, and the parking spilled over to the street despite them having two parking lots. Some people were illegally parked, which caused a situation when emergency vehicles could not get down Spring Street. Neighbors, not police, went into the restaurant to help people get their cars moved. Even after the incident, one car was left illegally parked. Something needs to be done. The restaurant's popularity is now creating wrong-way driving and parking issues, at no fault of the restaurant. I initiated an email to who I thought could help, and that email went out to Ken Nelson and John Santinella on May 9. With no response, I followed up May 16, and on May 18, Mr. Nelson responded, asking if I had reached out to John Santinella. May 23, Mr. Nelson, I sent Mr. Nelson videos of wrong-way drivers to corroborate my concerns. Mr. Nelson responded with, I quote, "I think they need to install a no-left-turn sign at that exit of the parking lot," end quote, agreeing that something needed to be done. June 18, I emailed Mr. Nelson to see the progress of what agreed, we agreed, needed to be addressed. Mr. Nelson responded with, and I quote, "John, Lori has been asking for help with parking issues due to the restaurant across the street from her on Maple Ave. I have copied you in, as you are her council rep, and maybe the two of us can have some signs made up." Mr. Nelson did not mention my main concern about the wrong-way drivers and only mentioned parking. Mr. Santinella responded with, and I quote, "I know, it is getting congested down there. Let's talk about options, and I think we should also check with the fire department to see if they have concerns from a public safety standpoint. I will reach out to them now, and we can regroup," end quote. I responded by thanking them for their attention to the matter, and I asked if there was anything I could do to help facilitate this, now that I seem to have both in agreeance. June 19, Mr. Santinella followed up, stating he reached out to the fire chief, who was going to send someone to monitor the parking. Again, the issue is wrong-way drivers. July 10, Mr. Santinella stated he had heard back from the fire marshal, and they didn't see any public safety issues, and the wrong-way driving can be addressed with signs. Again, seeing signs were necessary. We all agreed here. July 11, Mr. Santinella stated he would bring the issue up at a meeting with the town manager. August 13, I followed up with an email asking about the progress. August 20, Mr. Santinella, who CC'd Ken Nelson and Matthew Kopller, said, and I quote, "Ken and I have discussed this with the fire marshal and the town manager, and there isn't a public safety reason for putting up signs limiting parking that ultimately would hurt a business that has been in the neighborhood if one for or another for as long as we can remember." Not sure what that meant. There really isn't anything we can do. What changed? I replied letting Mr. Santinella know that we need, he needs to reread our correspondence because the biggest issue is wrong-way drivers, and I was not satisfied with his answer because originally, everybody was in agreement that signs were necessary. Do we need to have a head-on collision before we take action? This is a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Mary Ann Turner.
Who we expected?
Excuse me?
All the reserve signs. Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. I'm just here to just tell you what you already know. On the September 25, the Planning and Zoning is going to be talking about the special design district. And I know we all want something to happen to the mall. I'm not telling you that I'm against having something happen at the mall, but I'm, what I'm worried about is what's going to be here in 50 years after we build something at the mall. In the time that we've been listening to the owners, NAMDAR, in buying the property, we were hoping for a really good neighbor. We've run in a couple of snags here. But now we have this opportunity. When they came in front of you, I believe, they said they were going to build, they gave you all this layout to look at. In a matter of time, since when Sony has now been involved, I believe it's changed three or four times. One of the worries that you should keep in mind is that we started out with putting 400 apartments, now they're looking at 700 apartments. Folks, I was just in West Hartford today, speaking at a Charlie Kurt event, and I tell you, people always think West Hartford's got it. They are so worried about the number of apartments that have been infiltrated in their town, their parking, and the, their police department, we're talking about it. We have to be careful. That's what I'm asking you. We have to be careful. So with that being said, we have approximately, over 1,000 housing units in the pipeline already today that have been approved and can be built. You got to remember what Enfield isn't and what we don't want it to become. So I'm going to leave this document with the town manager. Hopefully, you'll, I'll share it with you folks. I want to be, I'm not saying you shouldn't have a special design district. ones who are going to make a decision that's going to be here for 50 years or longer. I'll be gone. Won't matter to me. But it will matter to the people who live through Thompsonville, and we talk about that almost every day. So what I'm worried about are things like partial flipping, which is one of the things that when Sonya said they're coming in, but they're not building this whole project out. This SDD legalizes vagueness. It guts the infrastructure planning that we talked about. I also detail this, but I'm not going to bore you with that. It deletes the public amenities. This one to me is really that we should keep it. We need to think about it. There are no sidewalks, there's no green space, there's no grass. They're going to put up the minimal trees, they're going to put in those kind of trees that go around islands. Folks, that's not what you want down there. That's not what you want the center of the town to be. And we're talking about trails and playscapes and playgrounds and water parks and dog parks, all those things. And the thing that's in our planning and zoning rules right now says, they get to pick, pick. So if I get to pick out of 10 items, am I going to put in a $100,000, $200,000 splash pad, or am I going to put in a picnic table? I'll give you a picnic table, maybe two. It fails the future commissions. That's the biggest thing. The people that sit there today, and all of you know what I'm talking about, you've all, not all of you have been here for 20 years. You change the seats, same thing on planning and zoning. These folks are going to make plans for us, and we have to help guide this town. It breaks the chain of accountability, and the master plan is binding. They're coming in to give you a master plan, but when Sonya does not have to build it. It damages neighborhoods. And one of the last things I want to be real clear about, when we built Presidential or Southwood Acres, or all the rest of the names of the things in this town, Hazerville, they wanted to have neighborhoods. You talk about you want your neighborhood schools back. Well, you have 77-plus acres over there with a water feature going through the middle of it, and you're going to damage the neighborhood because you're not building a neighborhood. You're building asphalt squares. If you look at what they're putting out, they're just putting asphalt on the ground. This prioritizes the developer, not the town of Enfield. It hands over local control, and we all know, our state reps have been fighting this, is that we do not want our town to be run by government in Hartford. We want to be able to control our town. I'm looking at you to remember that. Because if the state of Connecticut takes over, which we don't want, it'll be worse. And I guess the bottom line is, on September 25th, if anyone's watching, please show up at the planning and zoning meeting. Please read the master packet. Please understand what they're coming to that commission for. And please, councilors, say something.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else? George Young.
Good evening. George Young, 8 Holly Lane. While the roads 2021 project for Holly Lane and Ridge Road has been delayed until next year due to the Connecticut Water Company's unexpected replacement of the water mains, I wanted to thank the DPW Trash and Recycling Section for always arriving before 7:00 a.m. on our days of pickup. The trash and recycles were removed before the street closures, and large equipment had arrived to do the water mains at 7:00 a.m., so that we did not miss a week. Having said that, I would ask the town manager, through the mayor, to have DPW examine our streets and make the necessary pothole repairs and other pavement corrections before winter, so they don't dig up our area even more than it is now. Earlier, there was a special meeting before the regular council meeting to decide on many options for the annex. I don't know how that made out, but I'd like to suggest that this RFP should not go out until after the November elections. There may be some new council members, and they should be part of a commitment that this council is placing on them. After all, the public isn't participating in that decision right now, but in meeting with the candidates before the election, it may square vote. This is a big decision and should not be taken lightly. We still don't have any audited June 30th town financial statements. Is it time for another update, Mr. Town Manager? Today, I was looking for a current delinquent taxpayer list. The only one I found on the town's website was as of April 5th, 2022, for assessment years through 2020. There were approximately 1,400 real estate accounts that owed the town 4.8 million of taxes, interest, and liens, of which almost 416,000 was for the fire districts. Remember, the fire district's tax is given to the fire departments, even if the town never collects it. Incidentally, there is also 2,100 accounts that owe 2.4 million of unpaid taxes, personal property, and interest through the assessment year 2020. The combined total was 7.2 million, and now it is more than three years later, and I doubt it is any better after our last evaluation. Can this list be updated on the website? October 1st is just around the corner, and I hope the town manager has a plan to share with us on how the owners of unregistered vehicles in Enfield are going to pay their share. Let me ask an easy question. Would you mind if your neighbors hooked their garden hoses or sprinkler system to your water faucets, and you paid for the water? Why not? They are doing it now by not reporting their vehicles in Enfield. Same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Great points. Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach, Sononi 113, Rafia Road. I wanted to echo the statements that Mary Ann had come before you to issue tonight. I have a lot of concerns about the changes to the mall proposal and that the impact that that will have on development in this town and the community that we have hoped to foster with that specific property. I know six years ago, myself, Mary Ann, I believe Councilor Pisner, when she was a resident, came before the Planning and Zoning Commission when they originally wanted to subdivide that property and put a bunch of individual parcels on the outside. And myself and a bunch of other people had came forward and said, this is not what we're looking for. We're not looking for another strip mall in Enfield, and that's exactly what it would be. Another fast food restaurant, another fast food restaurant, and that's exactly, six years later, what has happened. Then this new plan came forward, and I was really optimistic. What we saw in the northeastern part of that plan, we saw angular parking, buildings with multiple shops within it, similar to Evergreen Walk. And now the new plan, it's all separate parcels. That's not what we're looking for. It's not walkable. It's not somewhere that's going to be a destination for people. You know what it's going to be? When people are traveling from other parts of the state, it's going to be a great place to get a bite to eat quick at a fast food restaurant before they go on their way. And we need to be using the space that we have left in town for our residents to live, play, and grow here, and I quite frankly don't think that the new plans accomplish that. I understand that the council is limited in its ability to enforce an expectation of this developer to do better. I know that because of the TIF and the grants that have already been issued, that we're limited in our leverage. But what I would encourage the council to do is to consider getting together and writing a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their upcoming meeting on September 25th, which I do think if people should attend, they do so. And quite frankly, say, to do better. To do better. To have a community that I think is more walkable, less pavement. I think these gigantic apartment buildings that they're proposing to do, originally they were going to be really narrow. Now they're going to be gigantic apartment buildings with a bunch of cars, like a parking garage under it. This is not what was proposed a year ago. And we cannot continue to just let developers tell us one thing and do another. And I hope the Planning and Zoning Commission says no, and you know what? If we get sued, there's some things worth standing up for in town, and we've been going to court for far more useless things, in my opinion. Standing up for the residents and supporting good projects, I think that's worth going to court for, if that's what we have to do. And I would really encourage the council to think critically about what they can do, what you can do, and all think about what I can do as a resident, to push this developer to deliver a project that people can live with for 50, 60 years. Because Mary Ann is right. You can't change it. I said it before. It's a policy on councils. You can change it next year. You can't with a building. It will be there. And once it's there, we're stuck with it. So unlike anything else, I'm willing to wait for something great, then settle with something that isn't. And I really hope that that's the sentiment that this council has, and I know that it's the sentiment that a lot of residents have, that we should expect the best out of what we have left for open space and redevelop a property here in town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Zach. Peter.
Just setting my timer. The sign?
Is the red button on?
The red light on.
Now it is.
There you go.
My name is Peter Sorensen. I live at 46 Windsor Street in Thompsonville. Today, I'm speaking as the president of the Historical Society. In the three years under my leadership, we have developed a strategic plan to formalize our mission, built a digitizing department to scan and share materials, built 3D digital tours of our museums, partnered with a college intern to reimagine our exhibits, hung numerous banners at the Old Town Hall Museum detailing historical figures, stories, and events, created half-hour documentaries for Cox Cable called Spirited Interviews, moved our liquid assets into managed funds to maximize ROI, added three female board members to seek balance and invite new ideas, began to develop a young historians society to educate youth on local history, began a holistic review of our archives, hired a curator to pore over the contents of Martha Parsons' museum to identify which items are related to Parsons, which are period pieces not associated with Parsons but may be historically valuable to other regional historical societies, and which have no historical value at all. Terminated the Parsons caretaker arrangement, mothballed the Parsons apartment, began a regional historical committee with members from surrounding town historical societies, worked with the Yujima African-American Alliance to add their Enfield African-American History Exhibition to the Old Town Hall Museum, and continue to host third-grade class visits at the Wallop Schoolhouse and at the Old Town Hall Museum to introduce them to our rich history. These are the good works that we continue to do with our 100% volunteer staff. These are the good works the town council has supported with an annual $26,000 grant to the Historical Society, except for this year. This year, you cut our grant by $20,000. Without providing any explanation for this decision, your resulting annual contribution of $6,000 doesn't even cover the removal of trees at Wallop School, which we paid for this year, nor would it cover a single year's insurance bill on the Parsons House. Your defunding of the Historical Society seems to be based on a decision about the Martha Parsons House that has yet to be made. We are still exploring all options for that property. Right now, we are squatters without a lease in the Old Town Hall because someone on your board questions our solvency. One need only view the publicly available Form 990 that all nonprofits are required to submit to the IRS to determine our financial state, which is solid. It has been suggested that we are not good stewards of the town's history. This is clearly false, but I would ask the town, where is the Strand Theater, the Higgins School, the La Mania Center? Where is Thompsonville that existed before urban renewal ripped out its heart and replaced it with nothing? The one place history can still be found is at the Old Town Hall Museum. Finally, I would caution this council to make, that making deep cuts to education, social services, and historic preservation may save a few dollars now, but will create a painful, avoidable mess that future generations will be forced to clean up. I encourage you to restore our funding. Thank you for your time. And before I end, let me just say this. I thought we had three minutes instead of five, so I practiced this and I got it down to three minutes. About three weeks ago, I had a major accident on the road here on Enfield Street, and I would like to shout out to the Thompsonville Fire Department, to the EMTs, and to the police in the town. They did a wonderful job and certainly came to our rescue. So kudos to them, and I'd like to thank them. They're some of the finest people I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Ma'am?
Donna Anderson, 37 Sapphire Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm here on the suggestion of Mariela Garcia regarding the blight, changing the blight law, where it can only be a blight if it's seen from the road. I filed a blight last year, and I don't, and now Mariela won't come out because the rule has been changed, and the blight has not been settled.
Can you please, ma'am? Ma'am, can you push the red button, please?
Did you hear me?
We heard you, but TV land didn't.
TV?
TV.
Oh, good. All right.
Don't worry, you look okay.
The blight is next door. The guy has a bunch of poison ivy. I'm allergic to poison ivy. These are just some pictures. He did, you know, kill some of it, but he didn't get all of it.
You have to, microphone.
I never did this before.
No, that's okay. It's just they can't hear you when they're watching.
Well, that's odd, because everybody tells me I'm real loud. So now, the case is closed because you can't see it from the street, but this, you know, this isn't a couple of patches of poison ivy. This is like bigger than all of this. And it falls into my yard. I blow it back. The police were called. I can't blow the poison ivy back, and I can't pick it up. And I just, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of picking up the mess, and the poison ivy is dangerous to me because I get shots, and I can't, not because of him, but I did have to get a port because sometimes my hands are loaded with poison ivy, and it's coming into my yard. But I, now because of the law, because you can't see it from the street, I'm stuck. And the police have been called because I blew the poison ivy back in his yard because I won't pick it up. So now Mariela came out this year, and he did kill some of it, but he didn't kill all of it, and now you can't see it from the yard. You can see it from my yard. So I wish somebody can change the law so she can come out.
Can I get your street address again?
37 Sapphire.
Thank you. Somebody will bring them, somebody will bring them to you when you're sitting out there. Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Dietrich?
Dietrich Jesus Gonzalez, 2 Yale Drive. The Great Replacement Theory is a false white nationalist conspiracy theory that asserts that non-white people are being brought into Western countries to replace white populations. The theory falsely claims that this is an intentional plot orchestrated by elites, often referencing Jewish people to achieve a political or cultural agenda. Famous groups that held this idea include the Nazis, a lot of far-right supremacy groups that are currently operating in this country, possibly this state, given the fact that they threw up their banner on our overpass. But that's neither here nor there. The Great Replacement of white people is far more sinister than any redistricting project.
The Great Replacement Theory is a false white nationalist conspiracy theory that asserts that non-white people are being brought into Western countries to replace white populations. The theory falsely claims that this is an intentional plot orchestrated by elites, often referencing Jewish people to achieve a political or cultural agenda. Famous groups that held this idea include the Nazis, a lot of far-right supremacy groups that are currently operating in this country, possibly this state, given the fact that they threw up our, threw up their banner on our overpass. But that's neither here nor there. The Great Replacement of White People is far more sinister than any redistricting project. That is at the core of the Democrat project, at the core. And Jasmine Crockett is just some circus act in that entire operation, but it's deathly serious. She, you shouldn't take what she says seriously. It's just a joke. What she represents is very serious, which is the continued attempt to eliminate the white population in this country. Generally, I would critique somebody that says, talks like that, sounds like a Nazi. That sounds like Nazi rhetoric. That was said live, August 4th, 2025, by your boy Charlie Kirk. A moment, please. Here we go. Let's see. "You will be leaving the Enfield Town Council the easy way or the hard way. It's up to you, you race-baiting POS. Thanks for proof of a threat." "No threat, promise. You're all getting voted out. I'm not on the council, you inbred moron." One moment. Then I get a screenshot of something I put on Facebook announcing my joy as a brown man that a white supremacist caught a bullet to the throat. As is my right, given the fact that, I mean, if you've ever read a history book. Thank you.
Red light's on. That's a good sign. All right. So Gary Young, Abbey Road, 320 Abbey Road. I don't have a planned speech tonight, but I want to address the council regarding the speeding that I've brought up many times in the past on my resident street specifically, Abbey Road. I understand the concern is town-wide, and in fact, if you watch the news, it's statewide. It's probably countrywide. It's a national issue, absolutely. What I will say, however, is that I see many other towns addressing the problem in the news. When I see the town of Enfield in the news, all I see are negative things. So I went back, I believe it was September of '23, that I came before the town and I brought up my concern. Lori will remember that. She lives right down the street. She watches people fly by that stop sign that she lives at every day. So in January 11th, '24, the Public Safety Committee meeting, minutes, automated traffic enforcement was added to the agenda. Traffic calming patterns were added to the agenda. However, there was a motion from Bob and Ken to remove the topic from the Public Safety Committee agenda. As I continue to go through here, automated traffic enforcement is brought up two more times in the year '24, and both times they're tabled and put aside. However, when I look at the agenda for all of '25, and I've been here twice, once I believe back in March, and I brought it up, and multiple people on the council stated, yes, Gary, we understand there's a problem, we appreciate your concern, and we are doing something about it. I have yet to see traffic calming anywhere in '25. Nowhere. However, when I go through here, loitering on public property, four times. Four times it's been brought up. I haven't seen that, or any resident, bring that up in a council meeting. I'm taking time away from my home and my family to be here and complain about a problem. I'm hearing that you folks are, yes, I agree with you, but yet it's not put on a topic in the Public Safety Committee meeting. Towing of vehicles during parking bans, five times. Five times this year on the agenda. It's nice to see the council members going out and talking to the public, walking the streets. I haven't seen any council member walk down Abbey Road when people are driving by at 50, 60, 70 miles an hour. Why? Because it's a safety problem, and you folks know it, and nothing is being done about it. Yeah, I'm upset. I'm angry. I've been there 19 years. Someone in the back talked about spending money. $10,000 I'm going to spend in my property taxes this year. My two children have graduated from the school system and are out. I get trash collection once a week. $10,000. Those are some pretty damn expensive barrels to watch get picked up. I don't see an officer show up in my driveway but more than maybe 10 minutes at a time. Shows up, backs up, and I got cameras to watch this. Within five minutes of backing up in our driveway, guess what? Lights on, and he's pulling someone over. He may come back a second time. Now, why is he only coming back a second time? That's a great question, so I have an answer for you. August 14th, '24, agenda, requested motor vehicle enforcement locations, situational awareness. Chief Fox presented in the current list of 93 requested locations in town for traffic calming concerns. Abbey Road is probably on that list a few times. Now, you guys helped the Enfield Police buy some solar traffic cameras or some signs, right? I've seen them once on Abbey Road. However, I've seen that same pair of signs on other streets two different times, cycled. Haven't been back on Abbey Road yet. Now, I've had conversations with other council folks. I've actually talked to a few different residents. We agree, for a majority of people, they don't even care. They don't even pay attention to it. They just drive by it. In fact, they have people that will speed faster. I'll come back for the second section. Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? How about for the second time? Katie?
All right. One last thing from the budget from 2020 to 2023. The town is, oh, Katie, for voice, 12 Anne Street. So one last thing from 2020 to 2023, the town attorney's budget, if you look at budget versus actuals, overspent half a million dollars. And then we're talking about $20,000 and $10,000 stop signs we can't afford. ARPA funds or COVID funds, $500,000 for an upgraded bathroom, $521,000 in miscellaneous expenditures. No reason, no idea what it's for, mostly for economic development when we're already dumping so much money in there. And then you want to sit up here and say how you're fiscally responsible. Now, the Board of Ed shortfall, which I've emailed about and have had no response to from finance or Mr. Nelson. The Board of Ed shortfall, based on budget adverse actual expenditures, the, from 2011 until 2023, they actually accumulated 2.89 million in a shortfall. So there was already $3 million in a shortfall. Then, the question that I have not gotten answered was, why was the adopted line versus the adjusted or revised $3 million difference? So there is $6 million. And why did the Board of Ed have a shortfall after 13 years? Because six of the 12 budget seasons, their increase was under 1%. Their highest increase was 3.05% in that time. So when you say that they're giving the highest increase that you've ever given, it's pretty sad, when I just gave you triple and double-digit increases for salaries, for miscellaneous expenditures, and all of that. It is absolutely unacceptable. Now, if we look at it, the Board of Ed has overall gotten a 21% increase, and the town has been given 63%, which averages, I think it was about $30 million, and only 13 million for the, for the Board of Ed. But again, the false narrative continues that the Board of Ed and the schools are the reason that we can't afford things. My parents have lived at their street for 40 years. I called and talked to Mr. Hendrickson about it, and I was told that there's a lot of roads that haven't been done in over 40 years. But guess what's happening on the other side of Ridge? They're redoing what was just paved for the sewer system. The spending and the decisions that are made are not fiscally responsible, and it is appalling how much you stand up here and say that you are fiscally responsible, and then we have this. Then there's special revenue and water pollution control. Special revenue was created for recreation funds, but on the audit, I found that $26.1 million was transferred from water pollution control to special revenue, recreation. But in 2017 and 2018?
Thank you.
There's no actuals.
Anyone else, Zach?
No actuals at all. $23 million.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Name the address for the record.
Zach Sinoni, 113 Rafi Road. It's something that just came to mind about what I had previously spoke about that I wanted to mention, and that is of infrastructure. This new plan's proposal to increase housing by nearly double has significant impacts on our fire services, our police services, our critical infrastructure. We're thinking about the amount of money that we have to invest in failing infrastructure with our water pollution control. What is the impact of 700 units going to have on the town of Enfield? I think we need to think really critically about that. We need to get the current ship in order before we start thinking about adding some more passengers. And so that's just something that I had wanted to mention that had came to mind. And one last thing is I would encourage members of the public, if they can do so, to come on Thursday next week, on the 25th, to speak to the Planning and Zoning Commission about this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to go. It is the 250th anniversary, Constitution Week, working on things like that. I have a lesson plan I have to do that I did not submit, so I need to go do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Take care.
Zach, can you just clarify, is next Thursday a public hearing where the public can speak?
The public can speak about this issue, yes, and I know that there was some debate last meeting whether they could speak about it, and quite frankly, I don't think that the town staff were appropriate to deny Mrs. Turner the right to speak, but she did anyways, and I think that was her right to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? George, Gary, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, I went over to the last one. So real quickly, as I go back to that August 14th, I did speak specifically, there is an issue that Chief Fox brought up. However, on that August 14th minutes, it's also brought up about the Middle Road for speed enforcement, which is, that particular street is brought up three different times in seven months. Abbey Road, again, has not been mentioned once, so I'm not sure how Abbey Road gets into this discussion, but I would really like some help to try to figure out how that's done. And then Mr. Bromson instructs to the Enfield Police Department, provide one potential location for installation of permanent traffic calming project. I suspect that's the location you spoke of in the last meeting that I was here, where you were testing the street or potentially thinking of a street. Like to know more about that. We can't put speed bumps on Abbey Road. I understand that, but something has to be done. And then this middle and beach is brought up again. The last thing that I want to speak to, and I'm going back to money spending, the speed trailers. I had brought up the concern about the speed trailers, the old solar speed trailers that actually help the police department track the speed so they can understand if there is truly an issue or if there is not. Those particular speed trailers, I've noticed in the town multiple times where they're no longer functioning. You drive by them, and I think Mr. Crissati heard me mention that the last time on Broadbrook Road, which is where I noted it just before the project. Those speed trailers have a simple solution, and that is help Chief Fox spend some money to get new battery systems put into those trailers, because right now, those trailers do not function. They get charged at the facility, they go on-site, and within probably a very short window of time, those battery packs can no longer handle the charge or can, can hold on to a charge for any period of time. So all I'm asking is maybe somebody can take a moment and speak to Chief Fox and say, hey, what can we do to help you get those speed trailers up to where they need to be to make sure when they're out there doing what they're supposed to do, they actually function properly? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else for the second time? Seeing none, we will move on to councilman communications. Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. So through the mayor to the town manager, I just want to follow up on a couple of things. Obviously, it's been a very tough several days for us and for many of our town employees. Can you just share with us what's going on in terms of getting our staff, the resources that they need, grief counseling, anything that they need to get them through what is this difficult time? I would just like to have an update to make sure that everybody is being taken care of at the moment. You can do that later, if you, if you were planning on doing that.
He was going to address it under town manager.
Okay, that's fine. The next issue, I know we, you were going to address in your comments, but I'd like to pull that up and talk about it now, if that's okay. We have talked about Ms. Davis's concerns about traffic down on Maple Street and Spring Street numerous times. You have looked at the signage down there, correct, and determined that we have ample signage on the streets, correct?
I think that for the, the one-way nature of that road, those signs that we have there are where they should be. I think I heard something a little bit different from her this evening, though, on that, that she was thinking that there should be a sign in the parking lot.
Right. So the one, the one thing that we did not resolve, and I told Ms. Davis this in my last correspondence, that we were going to discuss it in this meeting. Remember, we have not met since July 30th, and it was a question that Mayor Nelson had about a sign outside of the parking lot, which we didn't, which we didn't ever discuss.
Right.
And I think that was the last thing that was on our list to discuss. But all those other things, and Mayor Nelson and the deputy mayor and I and you have talked about this numerous times about the situation there. And so I would like to understand and know if we can get a sign, if we think that that's, if we think that that's going to work. And Mayor Nelson, if you would like to chime in, I'm more than happy to have your comments, but I, that's the last thing that we had considered.
Yeah, and I think I need to check with, with our, our people on our ability to place a sign in the parking lot, because, you know, obviously, it's private property and we can't control that. But it's something I think we can discuss with the, the owners of the restaurant to see if they're okay with that, and we can facilitate a sign like that to be placed in there. You know, there, I think, again, another conversation, including that, would be with the police department to make sure that it's an enforceable sign being on a private property. So there's a couple of components that, again, I wrote down a couple of notes to follow up on with that.
Okay. Because that was the last thing that we, that was the last thing. I don't, did you want to add anything at this point?
No, you summed it up. I mean, I, the last thing I had pending, and Matt just alluded to, wasn't a sign, it was an arrow painted on the parking lot. But again, it's private property, so that's something we'd have to do with the owners. But to back up your statement, Public Safety has discussed this, and they, the traffic and everybody through the police department has said there is more than adequate signage down there. You know, it's, it's a congested area with limited parking, and I will go one step farther. The particular house that she moved into six months ago, when the complete rehab was done on that property several years back, I was on planning and zoning, and the landlord has failed to put in the driveways. So there's currently parking for one car on a dirt driveway, and there is no parking on Spring Street for it. So I think that planning and zoning really needs to go out and look at who signed off on the final plan for the work done to that particular property, because that's one of the big problems, is the residents don't have a place to park on the property. So if that was resolved, I think that would help Mrs. Davis quite a bit. At least she would know she'd have a place to park when she got home, so. would know she'd have a place to park when she got home, so. Go ahead, John.
So, just to, through the mayor to the town manager, just to continue this, there was also discussion, there were all sorts of discussions about painting arrows on the streets and all of these sorts of things that we considered, and it had been through Public Safety. So, we have looked at a whole host of options for this, and that is the last thing, if we can just figure this out so that Ms. Davis can get an answer on that one sign, if that will help, then I think, you know, obviously, we should just look at doing that.
Sure.
Okay, that's it. The last thing for you, through the mayor to the town manager still, is, we talked about this, the mall eventually is going to come down, and there are a lot of seniors who walk in the mall, and now that the cold weather is coming, if the mall's not there, they're not going to have a place to go, and I don't, we had talked a while ago about whether or not we could find an alternative location for them. I don't know if we've had any success doing that or not.
We're still looking into that. I think, you know, one of the options that we had talked about at that time was looking at the gymnasium and during certain times in the morning, which is usually when that types happen, to see if we can get, you know, something laid out for that. I think that's an ongoing discussion as whether we can get something like that set up, so we are working on that, and I would say before, you know, everything is done with the mall, you know, we'll have a solution to that.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Bob?
Okay, thank you. Lot of good concerns for people coming up and, you know, stating their comments. Mr. Young, in regard to the battery packs, I think that's something that we definitely have to look into, because you're correct, they do get charged, and then after X amount of hours, they're off, and people just go blowing down through the road. And we've had numerous conversations in Public Safety in regard to this, especially with Officer Meyer, you know, head of the Traffic Division. We've gone through this before. We'll take a look at that. We've talked about calming traffic, and the last thing that we had talked about was at Middle Road. And so, once again, we will take a look, and you are correct, there are approximately ninety hotspots here in town that they are still trying to enforce, and, you know, people have to abide by speed limit, and so your concern is not lost, and we'll definitely listen to what you said tonight, so thank you for that. The other thing, getting back to Ms. Davis, now, your issue that I'm hearing you is, you know, something that's been brought up in Public Safety, once again, with Officer Meyer telling us that, you know, the signage that's there is appropriate. I do hear you, what you're saying in regards to wrong-way drivers.
Point of order.
You know, so.
Track them?
No, you can't now.
Okay, because what they said is not true.
Well, just let me finish what, yeah, just let me finish what I'm saying is, you know, we've talked about that. Officer Meyer says there's appropriate signage, but if we can have them take a look again and see if there's a possible need for, you know, one-way signage, then maybe we can take a look at that, but we've examined that area, you know, well, we have as a group, and I'm not going to go back and forth with you on that, but, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, I think what Gary is referring to on the speed signs is, and this was discussed in Public Safety, is the batteries are ancient, they're shot. So, even at a full charge, you're 100% right, we're lucky to get two hours out of them. I know we had talked about replacing the batteries, but the units are so old, they're not worth it, and if I'm correct, Bob, aren't we out for a grant right now to replace them with new solar ones?
Correct.
That are portable throughout town, so we're working on it. The reason you don't see Abbey Road, per se, is because it's with the ninety other roads, and like the blue lights, that's something that's been on the agenda, we haven't discussed it, it just gets tabled till November. It's an alert for us on the committee that notifications are going to go out to the residents about the parking, so it's not like we've talked about it every time you see it, it just gets tabled like we do up here. And on Maple Avenue, what Mike just came up with is, I know a lot of times, the traffic officer applies for grants for signage and solar signage. What if we were to get some sort of a flashing?
I'm sorry, can I, your mic isn't on.
Thanks, Marie. Sorry. If we were to get a flashing do-not-enter sign that's solar-powered, I mean, that's going to alert anybody who's going the wrong way up that street, we put it at the corner of Spring and Maple. I mean, maybe we can add that to Public Safety and try that as an avenue.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I think we can add that on to the Public Safety, and we have discussed the solar signage. My other concern is, you know, who put that arrow in the road? You know, I've heard things that, you know, the Fourth of July Committee put these arrows, put that arrow in the road for their, for the.
The 5K?
For the 5K run, so maybe we can take a look, get rid of that, you know, if we can somehow, you know, whether it's, that is private property?
No, it's on public street.
It's on public street, so, you know, are drivers confused when they see an arrow, they're just going that way? Well, let's take, get rid of that, you know? I think that's something that we could do. So, but I do have one other concern, off-topic to your concerns. Over on St. James, 39 St. James, when there's heavy rains, I'm concerned about people's property, it's getting washed away, there's a drain that's in their backyard that really needs to be cleaned out or widened up so that, you know, they don't get this overflow. Somebody's losing ground, and their actual fence is going to start caving in soon, and so that area there, when it rains heavy, there's a flood that goes down their property line and out onto St. James and to, you know, the drainage area. And I also noticed that out in that area, you know, that those drains have to be cleaned out because there's a lot of debris in pretty much that whole section of town, so if we could take a look at that, that would be awesome, but they do have a major concern about their drainers, the yard gets flooded out, and he's also had some property damage to his boat that's parked on the side, he has an area where he's got like a stone area, and when that, and I saw a video, and we'll forward you some videos on that, it washes out and really, it's like that deep in his yard, it's very concerning. I'm concerned about, well, there's other areas of that town that things are getting washed away, but that land is eroding, his fence is going to start coming down pretty soon, so if we could take a look at that, whether they widen out the area where the drain is in their yard, but if that seems to, you know, they say that they've been out there, they tried cleaning it out, but they would just put it out, and then the next rain, it would all come back right in, so it needs to be widened out.
Just 39?
39 St. James. Okay? All right. Just want to mention one other thing, that the month of September is Suicide Awareness Month. I just want, once again, it's a major public health issue, it's problems that we have, it's far-reaching personal, social, economic implications, and once again, even though we have a lot of awareness, and there's a lot of mental health issues, if somebody needs help and support, contact Social Services. There's mental health concerns all over the place, and once again, you know, people who've lost their lives, you know, there's town sources, resources that are available, so I just wanted to mention that, that every day should be an awareness, you know, even though they state that September is Suicide Awareness Month, but every day should be an awareness day for everybody. Also, on September 27th, there's a Hall of Fame dinner, which is at Oak Ridge Country Club, and, you know, there's a few other things that I could mention, but, oh, Allied has their annual walk on October 4th, and congratulations to K-9 Officer Alexander and K-9 Duke. They competed in the Hometown Foundation of the Dream Ride event a few weeks back, they finished fourth overall, and then he also captured first in the environmental apprehension area, you know, very involved with the Dream Ride event, and 600 special needs athletes were able to get their dream ride with all the people who volunteered, so thank you for that, and anybody, and there were people from Enfield that volunteered their vehicle and actually partook in it, so thank you for that. That's about it.
You sure?
Yeah, I am sure, I am sure, so, thank you.
Councilman Mantini.
Thank you.
No comment.
In our Public Works Subcommittee, a couple of months back, not too long, we talked about, with Donald, of course, putting a sign or some sort of indication, George Washington, where it intersects with Hazard. People are driving to get to the light, heading towards Summers, but they're not allowing or leaving open a space for vehicles to go down, and that would cause problems for emergency vehicles. The road is essentially blocked, and it's not just at, you know, dinnertime or lunchtime, it's mostly all of the day.
Do you want me to address that?
It's what?
Do you want me to address where we are with that?
Yeah.
So, Public Safety is working on that, and we have discussed blocking the end of Middle Road where it goes to Hazard Avenue. That would be George Washington and, what was the other street?
Jefferson and Jefferson.
And Jefferson. So, anybody who tries to shortcut Hazard Avenue by going down Middle is going to have to go, is going to have to go up to South. That's where we are right now. We are in the process of setting a public hearing, and all the residents in that area will be notified to see if this is something they're interested in doing, because I have gotten many complaints about Middle Road residents, and this is the best thing that we're coming up with, and the police department's not for it, they're not against it, they're open to discuss it, but we're not willing to move forward if the residents aren't on board with us, so we're working on it for you.
So, how, if I may, will that address the traffic coming from Hartford toward Summers and not, or being stopped at that intersection? No one can get in and out of there, and even if you block it, how is an emergency vehicle going to get through there?
It's going to come down Middle Road or South Road.
The emergency vehicle?
Yeah.
What if it has?
Because you can't get down Hazard Avenue now, whether it's blocked or not, you can't get down Hazard Avenue.
All right, so it'll be interesting, you know, once we have the public hearing, because I would like to learn more about that.
Hundred percent.
Because you and I talked about it in Public Works. Okay. The other request that I have with respect to our council, I would like to ask that we reinstate the, I think it's $13,000 request for the Warming Center, People for People, and I've asked our town manager to come prepared with a resolution in the event that I can get support to put that money back in, because it is going to be getting cold, and they do have a need for that extra fund. And our town attorney, I'm sure everybody has read his decision, his legal, you know, decision that there is no violation if the council does make a donation, and of course, we've been doing it for years anyway, so I would like to request that we do that at this council meeting.
Okay.
Could I get a second? Mr. Nelson?
Not for me. I don't agree, I still, we got sued for Bloomfield. I understand, Cindy, I'm not willing to second it, and if they want to move to a different location where nobody can sue the town, and I understand John saying they don't commingle the funds, I don't think John has actually seen St. Pat's books to know what they do with the $6,000. We held a graduation at a church, so we handed the Board of Ed money, the Board of Ed paid the church for the use. We got sued, we lost, okay? I'm not willing to take the chance, but I am one of eleven. There's ten other council members that can second this for you and vote on it and restore the funding if you'd like.
Thank you for that. However, we are looking at apples and oranges here, because we have set a precedent, we've been allowing this for years, nine years, and as far as being sued, according to legal, that is not a violation of the Establishment Clause, so therefore, let's be humane and let's give this group just a little bit of money that they're looking for. God knows, we give money everywhere else, and for whatever purposes, for whatever projects, but this is imperative that we reach out to help those in need. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will look for a second.
All right.
Let everybody jump up at once, but.
Jim?
Point of order. I don't know that we can do this now in this part of the agenda, I think we have to wait. This is just a point of order for, and the clerk can tell me. I think we have to wait to item 15. Have to wait to item 15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob certainly said it well at the open of the meeting, but I also wanted to take a moment to offer my public condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of Jamie Nickerson. From my time on the athletic fields, I personally observed, I witnessed a man that always was willing to step up, find solutions, and go above and beyond to help others. He was a deeply respected member in the town. As you can see, just by the turnout with the vigil last night, it was a good turnout, it showed, brought the community together and showed the level of respect that everyone had for Jamie. He made a real difference in people's lives, and his passing is going to be a great loss to us all. And of course, he went to the bathroom. I was going to thank Mayor Nelson and also Councilman Santinella, the leadership of both parties recently came together to issue a public joint statement denouncing public violence. I thought it was timely, I thought it was spot-on, so thank you for that. And then, as far as traffic and all the issues in town with speeding, reckless driving, I see it myself, just driving here and there, driving my kids around, and it's amazing how my kids always have friends that are halfway across town or fifteen minutes away, no one lives close to us, so I make my way through town and I see it myself, so all the comments are made here, they're spot-on as well, and, you know, we can talk about mitigation measures, we can talk about improving issues and roads, and we can talk about that, but I've always been a big fan, I'll say that, from 23 years of law enforcement experience in Hartford, a big fat ticket. You start running big fat tickets, that's how you truly change driving behavior. You hit them in the pocket, you hit them in the purse, that's how you change it, and if they don't pay the ticket, so they continue, they get their license suspended, their car gets towed. That's the way you do it. That's just me speaking my opinion, and that's what I've seen in the past, but certainly we can do that with other mitigation measures, but I think really, we need tickets. Our police department's busy, we do have a traffic division, you know, but maybe we can allow more resources to assist here. We do have DMV police that are involved with cities and towns, maybe we can request them for some assistance, maybe a surge to certain areas. I know we did a surge a couple of months ago, it seemed very successful, maybe we can get another. Maybe we can get another surge going on, maybe state police, some of our local partners, state partners can kinda help us out with that. So, send a message to everyone in town that Enfield is not gonna put up with reckless driving, speeding, and we're gonna keep our roadways safe. And that's all I got for now, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jim, all set? Councilman Angier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer my sincere sympathies to the families of Tim Jensen and Jamie Nickerson. It's a sad loss for the whole community. There was a wonderful turnout last night at the vigil on the green. There were hundreds of people there. And I wanted to thank Councilor Pisner for bringing candles and handing them out to everyone. That was really a beautiful gesture. I wanted to just address briefly to Lori Davis. I don't know, unless you come to the meetings all the time, you don't know how we run all the meetings. We have an agenda that we have to follow, and there's time for the public to speak, and we all have to listen, and then it's our turn to speak. And we can't go back and forth, otherwise we'd be here all night, and people are so passionate about their own issues. But there is a place later in the meeting, if you wanna come up again, or if it's too late for you, you can come back at another time. So not everyone explains that, and not everyone understands it. So I just wanted to be sure you understood that we care about what you're saying.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just briefly to Gary Young, I agree with what you're saying, and hopefully we can, you know, get it back on the agenda. And there's a similar street out in Canton that I've been on many times, and they have speed tables there. And as annoying as they are, everybody slows down, and that works. So, let's hope we can get some answers. I also want to announce that Thursday, October 9th, at 7:15 a.m., the town of Enfield will be hosting another Economic Development Breakfast. This year's focus will be on technology and tomorrow. Speakers will be updating the business community on Enfield projects, state efforts, and federal changes. And if anybody has any questions, you can contact Kristy, who works for the town of Enfield, 860-253-6390. And it's gonna be held at Connecticut State Community College as Nantuck.
Thank you, Lori. Councilman Hendrickson.
I just have one question on the traffic calming. The Martin Terrace, is that where we put the speed bumps, or we're going to? I just, was there an update on that? Did we start that, or?
It's a new road, Bob. When they start the new road.
When they pay, then they're gonna do it? Okay, that's what I want to know.
Councilman Ludwig.
I'll be very quick. So, on Ridge Road in Holly, if there's, if the water company created the potholes, can we just make sure that they can patch them? I mean, a lot of times they go through when they do these roads, and I understand the delay, but they don't do a great job of patching because they think the road project's getting started. So I think that's more of a water company issue, that they should be patchinists in a, you know, the very least, if there's, if that's the issue over on Ridge and Holly. And on Sapphire, I know that well, I'm pretty sure you can see that tree from the road.
That what?
The one with the ivy, the pictures you showed us?
I can't hear.
I said, I'm pretty sure, if we could check, I'm sorry, pretty sure, I'm pretty sure where that tree is, you can see it from the road, unless there's a fence up there now.
That's my fence.
I know, but I'm pretty sure you can see that tree from the road. If we could just have...
Again?
Yeah. We could check that. And then on, again, another issue, Matt, you're, there is sidewalks that are going in on Abbey Road from the latest road referendum. Obviously, I know we probably won't qualify for grants because it's not near a school out there, but if we're putting in the sidewalks, which again, which is one of my babies for that, that area, maybe we can, if there's any money left over, maybe we can put, again, one of those permanent with the solar signs, at least that gives something there. You know, because I mean, Gary's situation, but if you actually go on the other side of Abbey Road, it's as bad. And that was where I pushed for traffic calming, but it's a tough area. So Abbey Road in general's tough, so everywhere it is. But I think maybe with the sidewalks going in, maybe, if there's, again, that's, maybe there isn't any money, that's fine, but maybe we can add at least something permanent from a signage perspective to help, you know, and unfortunately, you know, the good news is, I guess, the sidewalks going in, we're not redoing a road. So as we know, in some of these roadways, when we redo them, they turn into even worse traffic issues. But I think it's maybe something we can look at. I'm not sure, I think that's one of the last projects of the 21 road referendum get done, is the Abbey Road sidewalks. So I think, just so you know, that's coming up. And I have a TIF question, I'll save it for later, I know it got brought up with this, with the zoning. And I guess I wanna be careful asking this question to the mayor, to the town attorney. We have a written agreement with the developer of the mall. So it was suggested by a resident, we do some sort of letter. I would think if we do, that puts, there's some contractual issues. I'm not afraid of getting sued, but we do have an agreement in place that was, yeah, I think we need to review the language before council does any kind of letter. Thank you.
So on that, Mike, I believe Matt was gonna reach out to them and just kinda find out exactly what's going on, because I don't think anybody sitting here disagrees, that it seems like maybe this is another bait and switch. But before we start making accusations like that, Matt was gonna reach out to them, and I think, you know, one of the conclusions was, the big boxes that you're looking at is just the area that they can build in. And my concern, being chairman of Planning and Zoning, is, you're correct, they can build in it or all of it, and make it one giant building. And, you know, we were promised hotels, and you and I, Mike, we talked about a hotel tax. Windsor Locks does it and stuff like that, for a way for our residents to recoup some of this money. Well, now there's no more hotels, and it went from 400 to 700 units, so we, we do have the concerns. But I would caution anybody on this council going to talk to Planning and Zoning as a council member, because that's overstepping our bounds. I'm sure Planning and Zoning saw the meetings where everything that was presented to us, but it's their decision, so I'd be careful with that. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I too wanna send my deepest condolences to the Nickerson family. My husband is a retired B&amp;G worker, and he knew Jamie very well. So this has been a really tough few days. I also want to reach out to those that tried so desperately to save Jamie. There are two employees that went over and above, and I just hope and pray that they will take advantage of any help that we can make available to them. Also, we talked about this earlier today, and John, I agree with you 100%, our first responders that got there, we take for granted that our first responders are just, that's their job. Well, this was a horrific accident, and this was one of their own. So, please make every available resource we have to make sure that their needs are met, because this is not going to go away, I think, for a long time, that impact of what happened. The passing of Tim Jensen, I think, was a shock to the community. I've known Tim the better part of my life. I coached his daughter in softball when she was younger. My daughter was an English major and wanted to be a journalist, and Tim took her under his wing because she was also an athlete. And as we all know, he was the voice of Enfield when it came to that. He took her under his wing, took her to a couple of sporting events, trying to teach her the journalism route. I always appreciated that. He helped me with my Amy Romano scrimmage. He helped us every year, putting our schedule together. He did all our announcing for us. And Tim's voice is going to be missed in Enfield. And my condolences go out to Mia, and to Alex, and to all his family, who I know many of them. So this is a very sad week for Enfield, and I think each and every one of us have felt that pain. On a little lighter note, I do wanna thank, well, I guess it's not a lighter note, but I do wanna thank the Waymouth Road Fire Station for once again hosting a wonderful ceremony in memory of 9/11. It was well attended, once again. Riley School does a great job presenting the wreath. She brings all her dancers, all her students, and it's always, always a very memorable and solemn time for us to come together. I have the privilege of being on the Veterans Council, and the Veterans Council, in coordination with the America 250, is planning a ceremony to celebrate all Enfield veterans. We had the date picked, we had everything scheduled, and at our last meeting, this last Monday, we realized how many veterans we have in Enfield, and there is close to 1,200. So we can't do it in one night. So we are now looking at a new date. So I'm asking each and every veteran who put the Save the Date on their calendar, please just hang on. It will happen, but we do need to have to rethink something here and change it around a little bit, because Enfield is a very, very patriotic town, and that number of veterans, we don't wanna exclude anybody. So, again, we did put the Save the Date out, but we're just holding on to that right now. And the last thing really was a fun event. The mayor, myself, and I had Councilor Hendrickson, we went to the Kiwanis Bike Rodeo. I had no idea what I was going to see. I tried getting my grandkids to go, they didn't wanna go. We had a lovely, it was the best morning. The Kiwanis Group is a new group that's formed here in Enfield, and they're doing some amazing things for our community, so a shout out to all of them. They put together this bike rodeo. They had some of our local officers, our community officers were there, they had little stoplights and stop signs, and the kids, you know, had to learn how to stop their bike, and if they didn't, he wrote her a ticket and gave them a ticket for, it was adorable. They had a bike decorating, they had, it was just a wonderful, wonderful event, and I hope they continue it and it grows again next year. But again, a shout out to them, a new group in town that is doing some phenomenal things. So, a big thank you to each and every one of them.
Thank you, Marie. So, I'm gonna start off with George Young. I'm so relieved that you know your road's not getting paved this year, and I didn't have to tell you. I've been worried about that for a month since I found out. So, thank you to whoever decided to tell him. It was probably a meeting that you'd demand happened.
That's right.
So, that's communication, that's key. I'd like to thank District 1 Fire Department, and Waymouth Road, and Smith Bus, because they held a very informative bus driver training safety day, and they covered everything. Smoke on the buses, rolled over buses, and it was really a great event. And Mr. Smith was there, his wife was there, and there were a lot of bus drivers, and I thought it was very, very educational for the drivers to, you know, you never know what's gonna happen, and just try to be prepared. Hopefully, they never have to use any of the things they were taught that day, but it was a great day, and I wanna thank both of them. Mr. Sorenson, the Historic Society, I have requested through the town manager, and then when you went on the radio, they called and asked me to go on, and I requested on the radio, I would like a meeting, this council would like a meeting with the entire Board of the Historic Society. On the homepage of the Historic Society, their number one mission is to preserve Enfield's history, not sell it. This is the first time that I've heard you say that you're not selling the building, because when we sat in a meeting with Councilman Mangini, it was pretty, you were pretty adamant that we had no control over the Parsons House, we have no say over it, and you'll do what you want with that building. Again, I'm gonna ask, what is the balance of the Martha Parsons endowment that she left with that home to make sure it didn't end up where it is right now? Now, I understand, you've only been in town about five years, you've been in charge for three, but we both know, it was very bad management, allowing a resident to live in the back of that house since the 80s for free, including utilities, and all they had to do is show it two hours a week on a Sunday. So, I know this council is very, very adamant that we save our history. We've offered to work with you, to take the house over, to merge the Historic Society back under the control of the town so we can save it. You weren't interested in any of those ideas. I know Bill Hoesley, who is no longer with us, offered $50,000 of his own money, but the two of you just couldn't seem to get along and butt in heads. Well, he's no longer here, so I, again, I'm requesting to you a meeting with the entire board, and let's sit at a table and see what we can't do. You also said that if we didn't fund you, you wouldn't be able to survive. The funding of the Historic Society, it may force you guys to close and shutter the doors. You've said it on Facebook, you've said it in the meeting downstairs. So why would the town of Enfield sign a lease if you're saying that you guys are gonna shutter the doors if we don't fund you? So, I know Councilman Hendrickson and Councilman Ludwig, they want the nonprofits to come in and show exactly where they are and what they're doing with the money, and you were the first one that was asked, and you denied us. You said call the IRS, they have the 5-0 whatever letter that you want. Well, that's not being a partner with the town. So, again, I'd like to meet, we would all like to meet, we'll have a special meeting with the entire board, and let's discuss the Parsons House and the future of the Historic Society, so Enfield doesn't lose any more of its rich history. And by the way, I do agree with you about the Strand Theater. Unfortunately, it was put in the hands of Save the Strand, a private group that this council could not control, and they did not save it, and it ended up getting torn down. Katie, I appreciate you coming up. I'm just a little confused, because the years you give are from 2020 to 2023, the bathrooms, the town attorney's budget, the town manager's budget, and then you look at this council and you say, "We're irresponsible." Well, none of that stuff happened under this council. That happened under the last, excuse me, you had your chance, and you will have your chance to come up again. So you said from 2020 to 2023, the bathrooms were done. That was done under the previous council and the previous town manager under them. Buying the building next door, that was done under the previous council, and Ellen also.
It was on the 24 budget.
So, thank you for pointing out that it was not this council that did that stuff. The $6 million, the board was short? Yes. It's funny how you don't include that money in their budget that we gave them as soon as we took over to help them out, and I think they did a tremendous job. Also, the town attorney's budget under those years. We also were handed a Hernandez lawsuit that we appealed, and we saved the taxpayers over $600,000 through the town attorney's office, but that was done with outside councils, so that cost us. The entire council voted and agreed to appeal the solar fields out on Abbey Road. Unfortunately, the outcome wasn't good, but like Zach had said, you know, sometimes it's worth the fight, just to get it out there. And we did our best for the residents out there, we heard them. It didn't turn out the way we want, but I still think it was money well spent. And all of that funding goes through the town attorney's budget, so that's why their budget was escalated the way it was. Gary, Abbey Road, I'm not done. We're trying, but it's grouped with 90 streets, and we're trying to come up with ways. I know there is a road in Vernon where people cut behind Panda Palace, and there is like eight stop signs, one right after the other, after the other, and it's annoying, but it eliminated the cut through, because people don't wanna deal with it anymore. The other street that goes in front of the elementary school, same thing. I'm okay putting all these stop signs up and annoying these people, but I think it's going to take a vote of the entire council to kinda override the traffic safeties officer's recommendation to do that. So I don't think we're there yet, but, because Middle Road, we are having the same exact issues, and that's why we're discussing, what we're discussing, unfortunately, we can't close one end of Abbey, but we can put a stop sign up at the top, we can put one a little farther down at Grant Road, but you still have that long stretch, unfortunately, that goes right by your house. that goes right by your house. So, don't give up, we are working on it, and we, like I said, the batteries, you're 100% correct, it was addressed, and I believe we applied for a grant to get solar-powered ones now to replace them. So, that's where we are with that. As far as Jamie Nickerson, I really can't talk about it at this point. So, unless anybody has anything else to say, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the deep loss our organization and communities experienced recently. The tragic event, accident that took the life of Jamie Nickerson has left many grieving, and the impact is being felt across our organization and throughout the town. Jamie was more than an employee, he was a husband, a father, a friend, a coworker, and someone who gave his time and energy in service of our community. Although I didn't have the opportunity to know Jamie personally, I've come to know him through the heartfelt stories and reflections shared by those who did. Through their words, it's clear that Jamie was someone who made a meaningful impact, not just through his work, but through his kindness, his character, and the relationships he built. Hearing these stories, I truly wish I had that chance to know him myself. He's going to be missed, obviously by his family, but also by the family here with the Town of Enfield. And, kind of segueing into the question that was asked by Councilman Centinella, we are working with, as you probably know, we do have an employee assistance program here that we pay for, and it's something that, it's not just for our employees, it's also for our employees' families as well. And so, we are working with them to try to reach out to all of our employees in a meaningful way, to make sure that they have the opportunity to work through all these feelings that they're going through, and the impact of the untimely death of Jamie. Again, this is not an easy thing, unfortunately, and, you know, any organization, town, that says they have this down pat and know what they're doing, they probably have never had this experience. And there's a lot of things pulling us in a lot of different directions, unfortunately. But we are focused on trying to get those resources to our employees, as, you know, in a meaningful way. And that's kind of the challenge, is developing that, that program. But we've spent a lot of time the last few days already working with the EAP to get those scheduled, and, again, over the next few days, you'll be seeing more of that, or our employees will be seeing more of that. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I appreciate that, and, you know, I don't want my comments, we are dealing with an extraordinary situation that we hopefully never have to deal with again, and so, my comments were, we're all trying to figure it out together.
Yep.
And I hope that they came across sincere that way.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. I just, time, it's just time, right? And it's, I know it's been four days, but I think it may feel like an eternity for some of these folks.
Yep.
And so, have people gotten, have we had councilors here to, you know, the Fire Department, to Buildings and Grounds, to EMS, to our Police Department, anybody that was directly impacted? Have they been in contact yet, or is there a time, do we have a time when that's gonna happen?
So, the day that this event took place, you know, we did have a meeting with the Building and Grounds employees, actually here in this building, with our EAP. Now, unfortunately, you know, again, because of the timing, we wanted it to happen very quickly. It was a remote one. At that point in time, you know, information was provided for them, who to contact, when to contact, I mean, basically, whenever. And so, that was put out. Right now, what we're working on is a more coordinated, organized approach to get those resources to people, and do in a way that, again, gets it in the hands of the people that need that help. So, today, we don't have that schedule out there, but we are, you know, again, reaching out to people to make sure if there are extraordinary issues right now, that we can get them in contact with people.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And all I would ask is, and I'm, Mayor Nelson and I have talked quite a bit, I think we would just, the more updated we can be, I think we would just, I don't mean to speak for you, but we've talked pretty extensively, and I think it's just our number-one concern really is about our people.
Yep.
And making sure that they're cared for, and we just want to know that that's happening.
Yep. And I'll definitely keep you updated on that.
So, I just want to say, I received an email today, I think, John, you were on it, where they were anonymous, they said they were a DPW employee, and they didn't think enough was being done. So, I want to publicly say this to all of them, EMS, Fire, any of them. If any of them feel that there is something more we could be doing as a community or a town to help them, please reach out. If they want to reach out to me and stay anonymous, I have no problem with that. As you had said, Matt, none of us have been through this. We're trying, we're trying our best, and our hearts are with every single one of them, and something may slip through their cracks that we don't think about. So, I made a phone call to several DPW employees, and they had conversations with people very close, and those people seem to think that we're handling things the best you can. I mean, there is no right way or good way to handle something like this, and I think everybody deals with things in a different manner.
Right.
And, so, again, to the people who work for this town, we're behind you 1,000%, please reach out to one of us, all of us. Matt, if you don't feel you're getting the answers, or the help, or you have questions, we're here to listen, we're here to help any way we can, but if you don't reach out to us, we can't help you. If you send me an email and it's anonymous, I can't reach out to you and help you. So, we're here. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also have a crisis response team in town, and it's through the Social Services, and it's headed up by Joanna Fornwald, and she's reached out to the high school, to other students, and to any other departments in the town. So, she's making herself available.
First thing that I had my list go through, actually, there's been a few things already crossed off, thankfully, but as you're aware, we received a response back from ConDOT regarding their proposed State Service Road 496. Again, you probably don't think those answers were fulfilling very much. In my communications with them, I let it be known that I would expect council, request me to try to set up a meeting with them to have more dialogue. I'm assuming that's what you want me to do? If I'm wrong, please let me know. If not, I will move forward and get that meeting set up to where they can come in to...
Take over Main Street.
Yeah.
They need to come to Enfield. We really need to have a public communication, public conversation with the public, and Councilman Ludwig brought up a great point. You know, they take, take, take. Well, we've been fighting for a traffic light in Enfield High School for how many years? So, put our traffic light up. You know, let's get something for it. They're gonna take it anyway, so, I mean, let's try to make the best out of a bad situation. And I mean, I thought that was genius, Mike. So, but again, I think they need to come here and speak to our residents and fight with us, and let them know, we're not happy about this. So, I think we're all on the same page.
Yes. I will extend that invitation and try to get that scheduled.
And if we could get our state reps and Senator also to join us at that meeting?
Absolutely.
I don't think we gotta send a notice to one of them, because he's sitting right here, I think he got the, and, can you make that meeting, John? Thank you, he'll be here.
And if I could, through the merit, Matt, at least in my history of DOT, they've always, when they've done something like this, they've always wanted a letter of, they wanted the council to sign off on it.
Mm-hmm.
Which, again, I think that has to be part of that conversation. If they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it, and, again, I think people need to be clear, again, like I said to you, remember, there's also, we're redoing three of those roads through the local road, people are talking about spending, the voters voted for those three roads to get done. I mean, that's another issue there that plays into them taking that road, that we're gonna be spending local taxpayer money to redo three roads that need to be redone, in fairness to those three roads, but now they may be abutting a state-owned, you know, whatever they're gonna do with High Street or the other parts there. So, I mean, there's other issues there that are kind of outdated, people aren't thinking about, that affect the local tax dollar that we're spending, you know, in that area. So, I just think, at the very least, it needs to, they need to be able to put something in writing, and I hate to say it, the whole excuse to me about it, transit-oriented, is, in my opinion, it's garbage, I'm gonna be completely straightforward, and they need to put something really in writing why they need to take that route. That's just my opinion, I'm only speaking for myself.
Wanted to, since at the last regular meeting we had here, there was the discussion about the bus lot that's being moved from the mall to, at the time, we were being told 90's Phoenix. You know, since then, as you're aware, staff is engaged with Connecticut Transit, CT Transit. They have expressed interest at our lot here, but we are trying to reengage with them to look at possibly as Nuntuck Street, the parking lot there. Something that we found out as well, which I think kind of minimizes that impact if they were not to put a parking lot or a CT Transit lot here in Thompsonville, is that they've now started to establish a service that goes into Thompsonville. And I think that was always the concern, is people would have to walk a certain distance or a greater distance to get onto that bus. Now, there's already, bus stops probably more convenient than at the mall, that people would take advantage of, and I believe mid-August, they started a service that actually stops in the heart of Thompsonville. So, I think it kind of takes the accessibility issue off the table, as long as they keep that bus going there, and what they've told us is they're committed to keeping that, because I think they understand. It also gives us time to develop more of a strategy to put that transit lot somewhere in Thompsonville, and I think there's a benefit to it, because, again, you know, most of the people going to the lot are gonna be from either out, away from the Thompsonville area, maybe in the outer parts of the town, or from other towns, or possibly even from Mass, coming, driving here to get onto that bus. And so, those are potential, you know, people that can shop, spend money, and be, you know, a good influence on the Thompsonville. So, it's important to do something to get that lot into the Thompsonville area, but I think, you know, the immediate issue is them, is being solved by them putting that stop in the Thompsonville area, so our residents in Thompsonville can take advantage of that. So, we'll continue that engagement and let you know what we're able to work out with the CT Transit for the bus lot. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
I don't have a question, but I just, is there any support up here to put that Connecticut Transit parking and bus stop on Town Hall property? Our new parking lot we just put in, go ahead, Cindy, you do what?
I think it's a perfect spot.
And you don't think down across from Coronas?
No.
Where the bus goes is?
Nope.
Okay. John?
So, I would, my preference is for it to be down there, like we've discussed. If this is a temporary thing until, to get this, to just get it away from the mall, I'm fine with that, too, but my preference is that we make the other parking lot work, because I think that's the whole point of us trying to rebuild that neighborhood. So, I think it's worth pushing back on that, so.
Bob?
I believe the whole purpose was that this is a temporary spot, and I'm okay with that being a temporary spot for a short period of time. All right? I think what was originally proposed out on the Phoenix area was not a good idea. The proposal for over here for a short period, that's fine, I don't know how long that would take in order to, you know, whatever has to transpire for a lot to start over there, not quite sure, but for temporary, this is good, until appropriate action is taken down across on Pearl Street there.
All right. So, there's only one person who supports at the Town Hall on a permanent basis, Matt. Everybody else, it's either temporary or not at all, so.
Okay. But I said, we'll engage with CT Transit and see what can work out.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The, I think the last thing I wanted to bring up, so there's been a number of comments about the mall redevelopment and what's going to be happening at, on the 25th at P&amp;Z. And so, last week, I engaged our Planning Department a little bit more to find out more information and kind of help to set the table for what's going to be happening coming up. And what I got earlier today was some of the comments that the Planning Directors provided to the developer, and I think it's important that we share some of that. And one of the things that came out of that communication with the developer is a little bit of a change in that calendar for a public hearing. So, as staff was reviewing what was submitted, it became clear that there was a step that was being missed before they got to the actual public hearing. And that's, they are supposed to submit, you know, a, so I have the right word here, a informal master plan for the area being developed, and that has never been done with P&amp;Z. And so, as part of some of the comments that were made, they agreed that the next meeting is going to be their presentation of that informal, again, the informal master plan for the area. Assuming what that conversation yields, at the earliest, the public hearing probably is going to be at the first meeting, which I believe is October 8th, should be 9th, couldn't read it. So, at the earliest, it would be October 9th for the public hearing. So, I wanted to get that out there. Secondly, in all this, again, I wanted to just let you know that, you know, we understand, you know, what, the impacts of what that proposal could be. Staff has, again, communicated to them as part of the planning zoning process right now, I understand, that we, you know, are not necessarily enthused about the increase in the density with all those potential rental units. It goes from what I think was originally put out there about 27 in that density, to what is on that plan up to 56. And I think, for the most part, you'd be very hard-pressed to find anything around 27 in our community, and so, even at what was originally discussed, that's kind of a, more dense than probably what, again, we would like, but with everything else that was being proposed, it sort of made sense. So, the first issue there is, of course, you know, the density, kind of the sub-issues along the lines of that is, you know, what does that look like? You know, are they one big building? Is it, you know, townhome types? Is it, what is it? And I think it's something that they need to address as part of that master plan concept that they present. A second issue is obviously the removal of hotels. That's something that I know that they have in previous meetings discussed. You know, if you've been working with developers long enough, you do know that, you know, where they start is not often where they end, and to get developments done, there is a trade-off, right? There's things that you want, and there's things that they can deliver, and you try to match those things up. Again, we found that very concerning, how that, that loss of hotels kind of transpired throughout this process, and it's something that, you know, we have, through this part of the process, you know, made them aware that... that, that, you know, you have to explain that to us and, and help explain how not putting those in the plan help achieve the other goals that the plan should. Because, you know, in, in these type of developments, you, you want a mix of uses, hence mixed use, right? And if you start taking some of those uses out, the other compatible uses that are part of the mixed use are no longer valuable. And people will see that there isn't a value in that. And so the development that you want to have won't happen because of that. Again, restaurants, excuse me, hotels generally lead to more restaurants and generally not necessarily fast food restaurants, right? And so I think, again, not being here and having those conversations in the past, that should have been the logic of why it would have been good thing to have hotels because it generates a different type of, of use in those other lots. And so again, through this process, we're, we're letting them know that's, that's an issue to us, and, and we want you to be able to explain it. And again, this should help the Planning Commission discuss this a little bit better in, in setting that, those things up. And then I think the third issue that we addressed is really those public amenities. You know, you addressed it, I think, a little bit earlier, that, you know, there was supposed to be possible trails and other gathering spaces that really did not show up on, on what everybody had seen in the newspaper or even what has been submitted. Now, to their credit, there's a lot of sidewalk. But again, sidewalk is required, not seen as a public benefit or a public amenity. And we all know that there are things that they could do that would actually become amenities, vis a vis trails and small pocket parks and things like that. And so again, I want you to be aware that from the staff perspective, we are setting the table for that, that conversation at the Planning Commission, right? So I hope that, you know, it's an opportunity for the Planning Commission to get involved with that and start guiding what is going to be necessary for that ultimate approval that they're going to have to do, right? Now, as the mayor had said, I had committed to getting a meeting set up with the developers and having a similar conversation. You know, this is a two-part process. You know, one that's going to happen as part of the planning process, and one that's going to be happening, you know, at, at my level and the community development, economic development level. And hopefully through that process, we'll make sure that they understand, you know, what our goals are and what we feel needs to be done to make this not just a development, but a development that, you know, one the town's going to be proud of, and one that they can be proud of, and most importantly, one that our residents will be proud of and want to say is in their community. So there's a lot to do there. You know, I know you guys spent a lot of time already on this. There's still a little bit more work that needs to be done to get, I think, that place that, that we can reach those goals. So again, just wanted you to be aware of that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Town Attorney's report?
No report.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. And we will move on to reports of special committees. Seeing none. Unfinished, there is none this evening. New business consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It is unanimous. Thank Next is appointments. Town Council appointed Enfield Beautification Committee. A vacancy exists for a member. Recommendation is Sheri Sabansky until 12/127.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion to close nominations?
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of closing nominations? Okay, it's unanimous. And roll call.
No, just a hand.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't on appointments. All in favor of Sheri? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations, Sheri. Thank you. See, resolution to transfer funds and way bidding for two refuge trucks for RMS for a total of $783,060. Now, this is something that was in the budget last year for one of these trucks. And due to the study that we were having done, we put it on hold and the money was kept in fund balance for this. Donald Nunes was able to locate two trucks that are brand-new, a 23 with 24 bodies that were, somebody ordered them during COVID, never picked them up. And we could save approximately $70,000 and have the trucks on the road in two weeks. And the two trucks would be replacing two trucks that are currently on the road, and those trucks will be retired. They will not even be used as backup. So this is just doing something we agreed to do at budget time. The report came back. And this is a commitment from the council that we're going to keep things the way they are within the town for trash refuge. Any questions? Councilman Mangini.
You have to read your.
No.
Sorry.
There's no doubt that we.
Hold on, Cindy.
Yes, read the resolution.
Okay. Recommend, be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Be it further resolved that the Town Council does hereby find, based on the foregoing compelling public interest and in accordance, in accordance with Town Charter, Chapter 5, Section 8D, that it is therefore against the best interest of the town to solicit bids for the purchase of two refuge trucks. From general fund revenues, appropriate, appropriated fund balance, $783,060 to general fund, non-departmental charges, transfer out, and contingencies, transfer to capital, $783,060 from capital and non-recurring fund revenues, fiscal year '25 and '26, general fund transfer in, $783,060. To capital and non-recurring fund, heavy-duty trucks, transfers to capital, $783,060. Date prepared 9/11/2025, prepared by Donald T. Nunes, Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, obviously, we, we do need the trucks. No question about it. But what I'm wondering is the amount. Do we have to go to referendum for a large amount like this? Why?
Because referendum's 800 and something thousand.
Okay. All right. So we're below the threshold. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
So I absolutely support the trucks. And as I told you before, my only reservation with this is it would have been better if these were in the budget that we just passed. And if we need to take them out, we take them out rather than put them in after the fact. But I totally support this. But I just feel it's important to mention that we're going into fund balance for this, but it's the right thing for us to do.
But you agree. We took them out because of the report until we got the findings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah. Filling in for the DPW meeting. And Mr. Donald Nunes, you know, came forward with, with this. And, and his first initial for a brand-new truck, I think, I think the brand-new truck wouldn't have been available till like '28.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And I was in favor because we definitely need this. My only comment that I made during the meeting was this should have been passed during the budget. And I understand, you know, what you stated in regard to the study. You know, once again, I'm in favor of this. I just wish during our budget, even though the study was there, we could have put that on and kept it at the budget. But I'm going to vote in favor of it because it is needed within the department.
Beautiful. Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Anyone else? No. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungayr.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is a resolution to transfer funds and way bidding requirements for dugouts at the Powder Hollow Baseball Field, $40,034. And I'm going to read this one. So as of September 12th, 2025, the town has received donations totaling $2,250 for construction of dugouts at Powder Hollow Baseball Field. That's not right. Twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah. Two thousand seven hundred and fifty. We had two checks. The, one was for $2,500 and one was for $250.
I gave you one for $5,000.
I'll look. I don't recall that one, but.
Yeah. And then the Weeks family was $2,000. Tyler donated.
Right. I went ahead and then there was one for $2,500.
Right. Okay. So.
I just want, I'd like to interject also. I will be visiting Mr. Cobbler. We've got additional funds that did come in from Ardeoli.
He's got a finished reading.
Oh, finish up. Go ahead. We'll, we'll deal with it.
All right. So since, since this isn't correct in the top.
It's the only reason why I hopped in because of that not being correct.
Right. You agree. It's not correct. So we're going to skip the top. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Be it further resolved that in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 8D of the Enfield Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that it is against the best interest of the town to require competitive bidding for the construction of dugouts at Powder Hollow Baseball Field. From general fund revenues miscellaneous, $2,250 contributions and donations, appropriated fund balance, $37,784. Two general fund buildings and grounds, land and improvements, $40,034. Date prepared 9/12/2025, prepared by John Wilcox. The motion's made and seconded. So along this, I mean, it's, it's the $40,000 right now. There seems to be a little misunderstanding here. But I want to be clear, Enfield Transit Mix has donated as much concrete as we need to pour these pads at Powder Hollow. And his exact words were, it's for the kids, whatever the town needs. Just have them call me. I'll have the trucks there. So I want to thank Ziggy and his family for stepping up. The Weeks family stepped up with a $2,000 donation. Connecticut Mulch stepped up with a $5,000 donation. And let's not forget Spazzerini Construction. The town had a value of $40,000 to remove the dugouts, and Spazzerini did it free of charge. And it's set. And I know Bob.
Yep.
Tyler, the Tyler family, Tom and his wife, donated $250 towards it. Go ahead.
Okay. We've also received donations from the Tobacco Valley Teachers Federal Credit Union. We've also received donations from USA Hauling and Ardeoli Dodge. And I am waiting on six other final answers from businesses. I just want to state that in good faith, I did reach out to 30 area businesses, and I'm still waiting to hear back from some of them. But monies are still coming in, which I'm pretty happy and pleased about. And in good faith, I did meet with the Enfield High School, some members of their booster club and volunteers. And they're, they're all in and doing what, what they need to do to get this project finished off. And, and they're going to be donating their time and fixing up the concession stand, and also doing the reconstruction of the batting cage that would, in there, which would finish off this, this project.
And then if we can get the receipt and the tax form to the people who donated and also what they want on the banners to be flown on the fence as an appreciation. So any business watching who would like to sponsor Powder Hollow Fields, you would get a banner put up on the fence, depending on your donation, you know, one to five years. But this is how a community comes together. And Bob, I thank you for helping me. And let's play ball in the spring and have these done. And I know, Matt, you had talked about trying to get these in this fall. So everything will stabilize over the winter, and it's not a problem in the spring. And is that still the case?
It's what we wanted to do.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good to me. All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilor Crisati.
Well, no.
I'm sorry, Sheila.
I just wanted, so the dollars on this are going to change, or they're, we're still taking $37,000 out of the general?
We are, but that may get reduced if we don't spend it all because.
Yes. As donations come in, it will reduce what that fund balance will be.
Right. Because I know the number's wrong, Bob. Because.
I understand, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah. There'll be adjustments made on, as to the donations that are coming in.
And again, I'm, I'm okay with that money coming back from the schools to go back to athletics or whatever.
Right. I see that as the school's donation towards the dugouts. And even though it went into fund balance, it's coming right back out. Sorry.
I agree.
Go ahead.
To the mayor, actually, to Donald. Donald, these, these are really sharp. Much better than those concrete, terrible-looking, sorry, they're terrible-looking. And I was against doing it. I didn't want to keep them up because, again, they look terrible. And obviously, when there isn't baseball there, there's issues. But these are a fantastic compromise. Hopefully, this is on the website so people see it. And I, we were, Jeff and I were actually at an event together watching a different sport. Had something very similar, and they were very sharp. We're like, man, those would be great. So again, thank you. These are very impressive-looking designs. So thank you.
Thank you. That was four.
Thank, thank you. Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungayr.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a resolution or tax increment fund budget request. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council approves the following budget to be allocated from the TIF fund for fiscal year '26. Facade and building improvement program, $500,000. Downtown design fund, $200,000. Public safety improvements, $200,000. Planning studies and consultants, $50,000, for a total of $950,000. From Midtown Enfield TIST, TIF District Revenue, appropriated fund balance, $950,000. To Midtown Enfield TIF District Facade and Building Improvement Programs, miscellaneous expenditures, $500,000. To Midtown Enfield TIF District Downtown Design Fund, other professional, $200,000. To Midtown Enfield TIF District Public Safety Improvements, other equipment, $200,000. To Midtown Enfield TIF District Planning Studies and Consultants, other professional, $50,000. Date prepared 5/12/2025, prepared by Economic and Community Development.
Second.
So I know there were some questions about the TIF and how it's funded. So I asked Aaron to put together a kind of a quick overview, refresher for some maybe, a primer for others to kind of understand how the, the funding for TIF is done. And I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you. Good to see everybody tonight. Hopefully going to, yep, excellent. So the town manager asked me to prepare a very basic overview of TIF. This was a program that was established in 2019. We know what happened very shortly after. after 2019, so some of the information didn't quite stay with everybody. As you can see here on the screen, and you're missing out on my good font choices, Enfield's tax increment financing districts are governed by an overarching policy and a specific master plan for each district, and that is the Midtown Master Plan that governs our only district at the moment. There is a TIF Advisory Committee which advises the Town Council. You have the final authority. The idea is that tax increment financing is a process that uses incremental increases to the overall tax basis to use to fund municipal economic development activities or reimburse developers for project costs. Those are called credit enhancement agreements. We haven't had really any of them until recently, with the mall being essentially one of the first, even though it's not even in effect yet. The incremental is based on a baseline and increased value within the district. This is not a new tax, but a designation of future tax reserves. The best way to describe this is essentially, whenever we're doing our own budgeting, you're always supposed to pay yourself first. That's kind of the idea here, is that we're putting money aside for very specific needs, and this is an illustration that shows you kind of how this works. So, the green at the bottom there that says fixed tax base, we're going to start from our very far left, which is the starting point of this, the established grand list year. There is a number that is fixed, and that is always going to be the amount that goes into the general fund. That number does not vary. That continues to go in. The increase of those dollars, fifty percent of that goes into the general fund. So, if your value goes up, fifty percent of that increased amount from that established tax point will go into the general fund and be used for all general fund types of things. The other fifty percent, essentially that amount there that you can see that says tax increment, is the amount that goes into the special fund and can be used for these municipal uses. After the TIF expires, then everything, of course, goes back into the general fund. The tax increment would be over. So, that gives you a general understanding of how that works. A little more specific, for the Midtown District, there was some question of where exactly it is and which properties are involved in it. The TIF does not include all of the community. That means the TIF amount that is being taken out of that increased value of taxes is only coming from these properties that are highlighted here. And as you can see, the two big areas are the mall area and Thompsonville, the intention being that these were the historic downtown core and the historic, well, less historic, but still very important, commercial district. And those were the areas that were targeted to be able to use these dollars for projects. So, the majority of these properties within the TIF are commercial industrial utility. There are some that are apartments, two families, three families, and then the smallest majority of them are some single-family properties. A lot of them, you would see on the waterfront area of Thompsonville, you might see them as pieces where they exist within existing commercial districts, and they're still a single family. So, most of them, there's only forty out of nearly two-hundred-odd parcels that are actually single-family. So, this really doesn't come out of single families. It's really about commercial property supporting the improvement within the district. All right. The broad goals of the TIF District, I'm trying to move through this relatively quickly, is, as noted, the revitalization of the historic core and the retail core. You can kind of take a look down here, the expanding of the vitality, employment opportunities, all the big economic development types of things that we want to be able to build on and grow our community. And I really hone in on the item that says capitalize on unique assets. I think you all know this, and I reaffirm this very strongly, that Enfield has some very unique aspects of Freshwater Brook and the Connecticut River, our water, our Scantic River, if that were in it, but particularly within this district, the Freshwater Brook and Connecticut River, and then, of course, the coming of the rail line. So, we really want to use those as opportunities to grow our community. So, again, emphasizing this idea that at a point a few years ago, the council voted to set a freeze point on property values and then take that increased value beyond that to be used for projects, creating that fund instead of establishing a separate standalone tax that we would put on people. This is using the existing tax values and just setting aside portions of it. And then using these dollars as a way to leverage new investments. How can we use these dollars, such as proposed in this TIF budget, how can we use these dollars to encourage further investment? If we can fix up some of the things that need to be fixed up, if we can improve the elements that need to be put there, how can we use that as leverage? And then within this Midtown Plan, it specifically calls out that eighty percent of revenues will be dedicated to municipal projects within the district. The other twenty percent would be dedicated towards credit enhancement agreements that are signed with developers. So, the intention is to use these dollars for municipal things that are targeted in this district. And I just really want to emphasize that, that this is district dollars paying for district things. So, the original asset value in 2019 was one-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars, which at that point represented six-point-seven-four percent of the total taxable real estate grand list, and that's important. There's been some conversation about potentially including a new TIF district somewhere else in Enfield, and you can only have ten percent of your total, your gross taxable real estate grand list. You can only have ten percent of that under TIF district. So, we still have some wiggle room to be able to add an additional district if we are interested in doing so. So, I wanted to call that out. The other item I wanted to call out is the credit enhancement agreements. I mentioned the mall project, which takes place ten years in the future. One forty-seven Elm Street, which was approved at a previous meeting. We have just finalized the paperwork with that particular project, which is paying for an improvement at a traffic intersection at Palumba. And then, TIF Advisory has recommended approval, one other one at Ninety-two Main Street, but that's pending your review. That hasn't come in front of you yet. The current fund balance, the amount of dollars that are in there, in your paperwork, I think I had a different number, but the current fund balance, I just double-checked this today with John, was one-point-nine million dollars in that TIF fund. And approximately three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars goes in on an annualized basis. That's going to fluctuate. Depends on the values that are out there. Whenever revaluations happen, whatever it might be, I know I was talking with John, the mall, different numbers had to be established during that appeal. So, those numbers can fluctuate, but he said in fiscal twenty-six, we have, we've estimated three-hundred-and-fifty-ish thousand will be placed back into this particular budget. So, I'm happy to answer questions as best as I can on how the TIF works, but I just want to really emphasize the fact that this is not a tax. It is not something outside. It is existing tax dollars and values. We're simply setting aside a portion of those tax dollars for a particular purpose. I hope that explains that.
Councilman Hendrickson.
Okay. So, thank you, Aaron. I appreciate this. I'm still kind of lost on some of it. So, a couple of questions.
Yep.
What does... So, those are frozen in 2019?
That's correct.
For twenty years?
I think we actually amended it to be thirty years, but I have to confirm that. But the original plan was for twenty years.
So, what does revale do when we go to a revale next year to that frozen?
This is where I need John Wilcox, as my assessment partner in crime.
We did change that to thirty.
Where... There's multiple staff people that sit on the committee, and I just want to recognize that the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee includes representatives from planning, zoning, economic development, the assessor, John, so we're all kind of involved in that.
So, 2018 grand list is actually like the base year of the TIF district, okay? So, the values in the TIF district as of 2018, those are the base year that everything that is on, whatever mill rate is applied to that level goes into the general fund. If you own a house and the value was one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the assessed value was one-hundred-and-fifty, it goes to one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, you're still going to get taxed on one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, so it'll be one-hundred-and-sixty times the mill rate, all right? But the five-thousand dollars, the tax on five-thousand dollars worth of the increase is going to stay in the general fund. The tax on the other five-hundred, five-thousand dollars is going to go into the TIF district, okay? So, it doesn't really freeze your taxes, but it frees how I have to account for, basically, and where the money goes and what, how much we set aside for use on projects in the TIF district.
Okay. So, that money goes into the general fund, and then you move it into the TIF account or wherever we're sitting.
Yeah. Yes.
All right. So, it's not just businesses. It's residential money also going into this TIF?
A minimal amount, but there are residential properties that are within the district, yes.
Okay. So, even a residential can use TIF money, can apply for it?
Well, the general concept for this TIF money, the eighty percent of those TIF dollars are intended to be used for municipal things that would benefit everybody within the district. So, it could be used for, pick something, a park that would benefit not only residential, but commercial visitors to that area. So, that's generally how it's supposed to be used. There are credit enhancement agreements, so that is a way that a developer could come in and request essentially a refund of a portion of those taxes. Sort of how it works. Did that get there? Okay.
Correct.
And that is generally, within the plan, it is called out to be used for those development-type projects. So, a resident, unless they're doing a development project, probably that's, there's not a qualification for them to be able to apply for that.
Okay. So, that's definitive. No resident can get, if you're fixing up your house to improve the neighborhood, that doesn't count towards a TIF.
Correct.
You know your money goes into this TIF. Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, what you're talking about there is if they're fixing up their property, that's going to increase the value and therefore put dollars into the TIF fund, which we would be able to put back out, but yeah.
Okay. All right. So, the only applications we've gotten are the three, or two plus the other one. That's the only...
Right.
So, we do have a proper application form?
Absolutely.
Set up?
Mm-hmm.
And we've only gotten three?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. All right. I'll let Mike go on.
You sure? Go ahead, Mike.
So, you know, the budget that we're going to vote on, two things. So, we're putting some money in for cameras. Can, why can't we, and actually, Don, I mean, we talked about this, cameras. Look, I don't need any more design work. Sorry. I don't want to spend any money on consultants. We don't need any more consultants. I think we know what we're doing. Why couldn't we use some of that money for busing? Since we're going to have the, so again, we're talking about some of the issues with the mall and traffic. Why couldn't we use one of our bus lines, especially when the train goes in? We could use it for a new bus, you know, small one, whatever. So, there's transportation, which benefits the TIF district. You know, I think that's something we should look into because if we're able to do for public safety, which makes sense, we should be able to do public transportation, which then helps people from here get to the mall, and if we, depends what we do with the, you know, the bus line at Hartford, ties it all in, and we're using TIF money, and there's a benefit to the TIF district, right?
Yep.
I think we need to look at that. So, the budget's fine, but I'm not, I mean, again, I know it's advisory, but I think we need to be a little more, I don't think we need any design work. The other issue, too, is I'm thinking about it, as we talked about with them taking North Main, the state, if the state takes North Main, I don't think we need to leave that as a TIF district, because I don't want the state, if it's their rights, their road.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, I guess I want to be, because Elm Street's, so anything, Elm Street, our road or the state road?
State.
So, I guess we're already doing it there, right? But, but, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to be reimbursing state projects with TIF money, in my opinion. You know, because what we're kind of got into on the end of Elm Street with that project, which again, I fundamentally have a problem with it. I support it, but that really wasn't the point of the TIF district, to reimburse people for what state should be spending their own money on, right? To what you just explained it very well. This isn't, hey, to reimburse the state because they don't want to do the work. It's, to your point, benefit everyone in that district. So, they spend more money. Again, it's the old Navy. Rising waters raise all ships. That's the whole point of the TIF district, right? And so, I think, I think we should look at transportation, especially with, you know, whatever goes up in the mall, whatever ends up there, but you already have all the other, you know, retail space where you certainly could benefit. So, I think it's something to do. Yeah, I'm supporting it, but I think what's, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to spend money, any more money on consultants. I don't need a consultant telling me. What I would like to do, too, for you guys, is I think we need to make a recommendation for North Thompsonville to make it, that should be the next TIF district. I also think Skidaco could be, you know, as I know, will get close, so I don't think we can do all Route Five because of, you know, it might take up the full ten percent. But if, I don't know if it's possible to have a recommendation in October, because I'd like to go out with a bang, since I was one of the ones who started this, and one-point-nine million is exactly what we envisioned, but I think now it's, to your point, now it's time to start spending some money.
Yeah.
It's where it benefits the whole point of taking that risk that we took and the businesses who are on that line, and now it's seen some real benefit.
Yep.
Which then, that may ease some people, whatever ends up happening with the mall, again, whatever. It's, hey, we're already, again, we're already, we're already, everything's underway. You know, we've got cameras for security. We're now having busing for people who, you know, who need to get to the mall and back to the river. We're checking all the boxes, right? And then we just need you to keep spending money in a, what is a very safe and easy district to transport and spend your harder money on, right? So, I think, you know, I appreciate, and I think maybe, I'll stop, for the new council, maybe that you do go back and do a real soup to nuts, look at the agreement, because I don't, I still think there's a lot of confusion on what we did back, and I think we actually started in eighteen, if I remember, may not have passed it to nineteen.
Seventeen, maybe, actually.
Right. It was a long time. It was a lot of meetings, just to re, so people know what the money's there for, and it's actually now, again, it's there for the benefit of what will be a beautiful section from the mall to the river, right? And that was the vision.
Absolutely.
And I think the conversations with the North End, it was started back in the day, you know, I actually was the councilman at the time for the North Gate, and now it's time to sort of, that's why McDonald's did what they did at that property. And I think you could make a license, maybe down to the fire station, and have a nice little entry into Enfield, do the same thing maybe in Skidaco, and now you got yourself three development districts. And again, I think you can send the buses, right?
So, I'll address a few of your items there. I, the TIF Advisory Committee already started to look a little bit at the additional districts. We sort of took a big pass at it. John and I have to compare some notes and get some numbers because of that ten percent thing.
I know we're close. That's why we didn't do it initially.
Exactly. So, we need to, you know, we'll need to iron that particular item out, but we're absolutely on the same page about additional districts and what that might look like, particularly North Gate. On the item of buses and transportation, love it, support it. I'm a big transportation guy, so I'm, you know, in favor of whatever kind of conversations might need to happen around that. The fifty thousand dollars for the consultant costs were for a multiple of different things, and my only pushback is it's not just for another consultant to tell us what we already know. It's for things like if you have to do the engineering for a particular design, you know, where are you going to put this thing? How's the concrete going to go in? It's those kinds of things, but then also looking at the potential for doing some marketing around how do we get people interested to come to the TIF district so we can have more credit enhancement, so we can do more of those kinds of things. We need to push folks on kind of a marketing aspect. So, those are a couple of components of that consulting. It's not just another architect telling us the same thing that's been told to us for fifty years. It's more specific and targeted.
Awesome. Again, great job. Appreciate this. And like I said, I think now is go time. It's great.
Absolutely.
It's great news, and again, hopefully, things work out. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I just thought of one question here. What is the danger of going to the ten percent, or why didn't we? I know it was just a start, but if ten percent provides more money going in there and more areas of the town, what's the danger of going there? And to Mike's point, pulling out a state road, does that, I mean, that affects it somewhat?
Aaron wasn't around at that time, but I believe the main, if I remember correctly, at that time, we were, at that time, still thinking about maybe potentially doing other TIF districts in the town, so we didn't want to go up to the full ten percent limit. That, the ten percent is applied currently now, so whatever the overall gross taxable real estate values are in the town, in the whole town now is ten, so that it may not even be six-point-whatever percent. It might be, what, five percent now?
Right.
Depending on what, you know, as we know, the real estate values in the last revaluation went up significantly, so...
Right. And we have another one coming up, so... Exactly. And so, you know, our opportunity, but it is a state limit. That's what the state says, is it can't go past ten percent, but we definitely want to start to lean into it. And I think, based on my research, the real reason we didn't get there is because each of these districts require a specific master plan to be created. There's a whole process that has to follow, and I think we got Midtown done. process it has to follow, and I think we got midtown done, and that's just where we stopped. So it's not a matter of not wanting to do it, it's just a matter of, we just didn't get there.
Okay, and I do remember going from 20 to 30 or something, but is that, that's the end of it, though? Am I correct?
That's right, it sunsets at that point.
They can't be extended anymore.
Well, the state actually allows it to go up to 50 years, so if in theory, council decided that they wanted to extend it further, you still have capacity for that.
Okay, thank you, Matt, for getting this, and Aaron and John, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So my concern with this is, before we start buying new things for Thompsonville, why don't we take care of what's there? I was part of a streetscape improvement, and so were you, Matt, when we put all those beautiful lights in, and we did it in Hazardville too. Drive down Pearl Street, take a look at those lights.
Yeah.
It's embarrassing.
Yep.
Okay, so we need to fix the lights, that's where part of the money should go. You want to encourage businesses to move down there, make them proud to drive down there. We just had a conversation about putting the bus down there. Let's improve that parking lot with that, let's make it a nice place to go. Let's enforce either blight against the property that abuts it, or purchase the property that abuts it, you know, I mean, this is, this is what I think the money's for, is to try to encourage growth, and, you know, those lights, I don't think we need to replace them all, but they're missing caps, they need to be painted, it's sad, and that's where I think it needs to go. And to talk about expanding the districts and going from 20 years to 30 years, every dollar that goes into TIF is a dollar that doesn't go into fund balance. That's a dollar we can't use to pay for a cruiser, or a teacher, or whatever other projects, it specifically goes into the TIF district for this use, that, and, you know, we're trying to find ways to grow the grand list, so we don't have to encourage or put forward tax increases. Well, if we keep taking away from that increase, which isn't that big, you know, I mean, the contracts and everything else are outgrowing the pace of the growth of our community, and it's gonna force tax increases, so I would just ask everybody to be very careful about jumping on and putting all these other districts in this, you know, and, you know, the mall, what do we gain out of the mall for 20 years in this TIF? Nothing. The residents of Enfield, am I correct, Aaron?
I mean, by improving the mall.
That's not what I asked.
Okay.
The money that goes from the mall improvement?
Yep.
Is 50% goes into TIF?
Right.
Okay, not into the town, goes to TIF, 50% of the improvement?
Right.
And they get the full 50% back, so it doesn't improve anything around the mall for 20 years, or 30 years, whatever, and.
Mr. Mayor, we agreed to that, though.
I understand that, I understand that, but now people are talking about expanding it to other parts of the town, and if 10% is the max, I mean, once the mall does this, and the mall's value, let's just say it's $400 million, I mean, where does that put us at the 10% mark? Because is it 10% of the value?
No, no.
Oh, gross area?
Yes.
Okay.
It's happened to this money now, if they wanted to, before they spent the dime, so it's, that's the whole point, it's, I mean, it's no different, it's a different form of doing an abatement, it's just, look, we want to make sure you're spending your money in the town of Enfield.
Right.
That's what it's doing. Instead of giving an abatement, and they don't hire who they say they're gonna hire, and they don't do, that was, it was another form of, without just giving a tax abatement and running the risk that they weren't gonna do what they were going to do.
Right, like building two hotels and now it's 700 apartments.
The idea is to grow the grand list.
But I mean, that's the whole point, is to grow the grand list.
That's the point, to grow the grand list.
The council agreed to that, to Bob's point, the council agreed to the deal.
We end up giving deals, and it kills us, but the idea is to grow the grand list, and you talk about that tax money doesn't go, it does if we grow the grand list.
Right, but if we're growing the grand list.
And giving them the money back, then that's on us, that's on us.
Well, no, that's TIF, TIF, and they wanted more, they wanted 75%.
It's still on us, we gave it to them.
We voted no.
Yeah, we did, but we gave them the 50%, you're talking about, we could have not.
I understand.
And just on the item of repairing some of these things, that's actually what that downtown design fund is to be used for, is repairs, new lights if we need them, you know, all the good things, art, you know, flowers, make people understand that Thompsonville's a good place to come and visit. So that's exactly what we're looking to do, is deal with some of it.
I think you had talked about the sidewalk, like, tables, and, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, Cameradas, Corona's has phenomenal grinders, I mean, sit down with a soda and then Puerto Rican restaurant.
Yeah, the Arepas, fantastic.
I mean, that's, that's the vision.
That's where exactly we want to go.
So, yeah, so why, so on that question, why, do we have to get an application if we wanted to put, like, so again, those beautiful brick sidewalks?
Yep.
If we wanted to do them, whatever, extend them, does the business have to come in with an application?
So the, there's multiple things that are within this proposal, so the facade and downtown improvement grants would be, let's say, the Puerto Rican restaurant wants to do an awning.
Yep.
They can come in, make that application, get $50,000 out of the fund, they have to match it with their own dollars for the project, it's a regular grant. It's actually, we'd probably do it as a 0% interest loan, forgivable after a period of time. And so that follows the kind of facade programs we've had in the past, so they could absolutely do that, they could come in and say, we want to do tables and brick and all this, and that's their plan, wonderful. The downtown design fund essentially is that version of that but for us, from the economic development standpoint, we want to put in something that is supportive of the town as a general statement.
Right.
In more parklets, that's where we would be doing it from there. So two sides of that.
So like that, the walking bridge over the brook?
Right, exactly.
We should have funded that.
We probably should have done it, exactly that.
We should have funded that through.
Or even a new pier in the.
A new pier?
So then, sorry, I don't, why isn't then, I'm asking a very dumb question.
Yep.
Why isn't the advisory committee making these recommendations to us, so we, do we need to vote, we have to vote on all this, the council?
Yep.
So I guess if we have $1.9 million in the fund, we should be doing this stuff now.
And I think really, it was, to me, it feels like there was a lack of direction under the TIF advisory, and we're kind of steering the correct direction now, and everybody's kind of understanding how they're involved with this revitalization in a bigger way.
All right, so just one question on that.
You said that three questions ago.
Sorry, dragging this out, so the current fund is 1.9 million, you're doing a budget for $950,000?
Yep.
That'll be, and then you're saying we collect about $350,000 added into that? That's the math you're using?
It can vary, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm done. Anyone else?
Roll call.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
He left.
Oh, he left, I'm sorry. Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer.
Nine in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution to abate property taxes for 11 Crescent Beach Drive. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council hereby abates the taxes, interest, and fees on real estate, on motor vehicle, real estate and motor vehicles at 11 Crescent Beach Drive. Date prepared, 9/5/2025, prepared by John A. Wilcox.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Right, we already did that, seconded. Do you want to give an update from general governance?
Yeah, so this was, this came for general governance, I believe it was the August meeting or the late July meeting. Actually, we've been working with this gentleman for about three or four months, he's been working with the finance department, unfortunately had some serious health issues, fell behind in his taxes, is trying to file bankruptcy, and, but for whatever reason, hasn't been able to, there's some issues, and so the committee unanimously agreed to forego the taxes. He is working on, John, keep, I can't, with two things with your office we were asking for, and I should have, I should have brought my paperwork from general governance. I know, one, he was trying to file the paperwork needed so he could file bankruptcy, and there was another thing that he owed, he owed us, that he was working with back on from finance.
I can't remember, it comes off my head.
So the, yeah, so he, we, he was very, he was, we had asked him for a number of different follow-ups, so for about a three to four month period, he got us everything we asked for, he was, been trying to work with us, we felt, again, I guess I use the term, we felt, you know, as a committee, we should show some grace, he was believable, we have to sort of make our own judgment whether someone we think is believable or not. I, I'll speak for myself, I thought he was, and he certainly had some serious health issues, and he had, he is working with our finance department on some of the follow-ups that we had asked for. So we voted 3-0 to send it to the council, and here we are.
Anyone else?
So you don't know what the certain conditions are, because that's what I have.
I can follow up, I can, I have it in my notes from general governance meeting, I can follow up for everybody. I didn't bring it with me, my bad.
So I guess my only concern with this, Mike, is there's nothing in here that protects the town, if something should happen to this man, and we have no way of getting the taxes or attaching his property, or, it kind of looks to me, if I was a resident watching this, is like, okay, I'm going bankrupt, I've had some bad health issues, so I can go and they'll just take away my taxes. So I guess to me, I need a little bit more convincing that. So I think if I knew what the conditions are that he's meeting, I would feel better about it.
So. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, the only thing that I, that I will say in regard to this, the gentleman, and I'm gonna go by, by the committee and take their recommendation, they've met with him, he has done everything that the committee has asked him to do, you know, he's really in rough shape, and, you know, so I would go by what our committee says, and, you know, I will abide by that, and I would support it.
I'll say it, Bob?
Yes, I am, thank you.
My concern is, any taxes, and we've done this, we waived the taxes, and a year from now, he passes away, his heirs benefit by the town waiving the taxes, not him, and I'm going to respect the committee, I wasn't there, and I do know what it's like when you're sitting in the room in front of these people, and that's why I'm gonna support this tonight. But what I'm gonna ask of general finance on situations like this, why can't we agree to put a lien on the property for the back taxes owed, not collectible, until they pass away, then the heirs are responsible? Because really, where are the heirs helping mom and dad save their home? They're, this is their future, and I have a problem with that. And so I would ask that you guys look into something like that, and also that this particular owner, not this one, but on the house, by you suspending the foreclosure for the back taxes for an indefinite amount of time, until the house changes ownership, we could say, that he has to stay current from that point forward, otherwise, you know what I'm saying?
I was gonna say.
And that way, we're not, oh.
That was, I'm sorry, that was the other condition, he had to apply for the disability, and that this was just a stopgap, he was gonna continue to pay taxes after, because he had no, no income except for the disability, that was the other condition, I'm sorry, I forgot about it.
He's gonna continue.
Yes.
But what happens if next year he don't pay his taxes?
That was the certain condition, that this was a one stop.
We're waiving it right now, it's gone.
Right.
So next year, if he doesn't pay his taxes, you can't make him pay this, because we just waived it.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
But the next year's taxes, going forward, he was going to pay, this was the.
But what if he doesn't? That's what I'm saying.
That money's already gone, I know, but that was the condition.
With blight, John, we, and you guys don't even see it, we say, look, we're gonna give you 12 months before we even address this, your house has to stay out of blight to make sure we don't just have you guys release it, and then they don't cut their lawn again, so. That's my only concern.
I have no problem, that's.
You know, I just, I have a problem when the kids don't help their elderly parents, and they're the ones who benefit from this, I just don't understand that. I wish my parents were here for me to help, so, Lori.
Do we even know if he has children, does, are there any heirs?
Doesn't matter, when the property changes ownership, somebody's gonna get the house, so.
Maybe there's nobody.
Then the state gets it, and they can pay us the taxes they owe us. So, anyways, roll call, please.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing the reduction of property maintenance fines for 216 Hazard Avenue. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the reduction of property maintenance fines from $28,250 to $50 associated with the property maintenance lien recorded February 21st, 2025, volume 2931, page 696, for the property at 216 Hazard Avenue. Date prepared, 9/4/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so this is coming out of the Blight Committee, and as you can see from the narrative at the top, there's quite a history here, we met with this property owner, she had quite a series of unfortunate things happen to her, at one point, she was out of the house, she was actually staying in a hotel, she did work diligently to do the repairs, and you could see from the photos that you've been given, that the repairs have been made, and the, the property is in good condition. Honestly, this is one that we need to vote on, this $50 to get out of blight, but I just find it to be pretty gratuitous to ask her for $50 when we're reducing her, her fines from $28,250 and asking her to pay 50. This woman, the $50 will make a difference to her and her family, so I would like to propose an amendment that we reduce this to, to just reduce all of the fines, and, and let her keep the $50.
So you want to reduce it to zero?
To zero.
I'll second your amendment.
Any other questions? All in favor of the amendment?
Okay, thank you.
And roll call on the resolution as amended.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing the reduction of property maintenance fines at 10 Russell Street. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the waiver of the $39,924 in property maintenance fines and release of the property maintenance lien recorded August 11th, 2023, at volume 2879, page 791, for the property at 10 Russell Street. Date prepared, 9/4/2025, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second. All right, motions being seconded, I will take this one, because I am also on blight with John. This is a property on Russell Street, the property is very, very well-maintained, there were two trees on the side of the property, and they were in rough shape. The gentleman did receive a letter from the town, and he cut down the tree, and did not know that he had to call for reinspection. Fines accrued. Then he got another fine for another tree to cut it down, okay? After a while, he, against his better judgment, cut it down. Then he had a survey done, and the tree wasn't on his property, it's on the Health District's property. So how in a good conscience, I mean, this man spent a lot of money cutting two trees down, and one of them, we didn't even have the rights to tell him to cut down, so that's why we've agreed to eliminate these fines. Go ahead, Mike.
That's what I was, I was gonna ask you, like, it seemed, how do you get the, for a tree, for almost 40 grand in fines? That's, I was just asking, two trees?
Two fines, right.
Right, so he, yeah, yeah.
It adds up fast.
Right, I guess so.
Well, and, and our goal in blight is to get him to add up fast, so we can take[1799.41] Well, and our goal in blight is to get him to add them fast, so we can take action.
It's unbelievable that he, for two trees, was 40 grand worth of fines.
Right. And it might have been a couple of years, and we've worked with blight. Now, when you get that notice, we make it very clear, as soon as it's done, call us, we're going to come out. So, we can eliminate this.
Yeah, I mean, this is just when people don't close out things.
No, I get, yeah, that's what I was asking.
It just continues to go. And with our new ordinance, once we reach $25,000, we then start being a little bit more communicative with the owners.
So, to the, with... Who makes the call on the tree?
Oh, well...
Pretty ordinary.
No, I'm saying, like...
It's not me.
We have a tree warden.
We do. So, the tree wardens decide whether a tree is...
No.
You're getting a no.
Maria does?
No.
Go ahead.
Good evening. So, I know someone had mentioned a tree warden. Tree warden is only for town-owned trees. So, Mariella is tackling the one, our property maintenance inspector, that goes out when someone complains about a tree. She looks at the property, and at this point, from the road. And with this one, it is a little funky, where if you look in the picture, so tree number one, you can see the one that's leaning into the Health Department's property. So, you see how there's a fence, and then the tree. So, technically, that tree, from my understanding, belongs to the Health Department, but it's enclosed in that fence. So, I'm not sure where the misunderstanding was. But, that tree was the one that technically is owned by the Health Department, but because it was enclosed, that's why he took it down. And then, after he took it down, that's when he was notified that it was the Health Department's.
Everybody good? Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine members in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing reduction in property maintenance fines at 28 Iroquois Road. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the reduction in property maintenance fines from $42,574 to $1,000 associated with the property maintenance lien recorded February 21, 2025, volume 2931, page 697, for the property at 28 Iroquois Road. Be it further resolved, that the $1,000 fine must be paid within 12 months, or the fines will return to $42,574. Date prepared 9/4/2025, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development.
Still moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. And now, I just want to be clear on this one. We are not going to release this lien until he pays the $1,000 within 12 months. This is a particular... You want to take this one, John?
Yeah, I was going to take the next two, and, but, well, I can, do you want to take it?
I don't care.
Okay, so this one, as you can see from the pictures that are in your packet, this gentleman has been working diligently to bring up the quality and improve the property. He has been working with us pretty regularly over the last year or so. And every time he's come back, he's done the work that he said that he was going to do. Clearly, this is, you know, the neighbors were, are very happy that the work that he's done has been done, and he has had no issues with maintaining the property ever since. And so, because he's done everything that he said that he was going to do, we did want to, the staff did put a lot of time into this, so we left the fines at $1,000, which we thought was fair, given the amount of investment of staff's time. And so, we would recommend the $1,000. And because he's been so helpful, we gave him 12 months to be able to pay off the loan, the fine.
I mean, he had professional companies come in, re-size the whole house, everything. He spent a lot of money, and he's, so we're trying to show him how we appreciate. This is the goal, getting the properties done. And, go ahead, Mike.
And John, you answered, thank you, you answered my question. I was like, why not go to zero? But since staff did, I agree, the two is the clean lien, if we go in with our folks, or if our staff does a lot of work. So, I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution reducing the property maintenance fines at 4 Lox Lane. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the reduction in property maintenance fines from $206,049 to $5,000 associated with the property maintenance lien recorded June 10, 2020, volume 2758, page 854, for the property at 4 Lox Lane. Be it further resolved, this authorization is contingent upon work being completed that was addressed in the Blight Review Reduction Request submitted by McCullough, Raymere, Librier, Librier Pierce LLP, dated August 22, 2025, under Long Bridges Pending Anticipated Work at the Property Exhibit 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Date prepared 9/4/2025, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development. Now, this property was...
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. This property is a foreclosure. The bank has been trying to get into the property for quite some time. The original owner passed away. From what we were told, a relative moved in the home. Police have been there many times. The bank received a blight notice. The bank tried to address the blight, and the person came out, threatened them. Police came again, and this has been ongoing. And then, the bank went to court to get these squatters out of the house, and the courts in Connecticut gave them a stay. So, that took more time. The bank has been in contact with us through the whole process, and we all know the problem we're having with banks maintaining properties, and we said we were going to hold firm. But this particular one, the bank, even when they couldn't get to the property, they were here. And they have the house under agreement to sell. They've already listed out all the work they've done to the house to get it out of blight. Plus, they have a list of things they're going to do before it transfers to the new owner. And that's what the language is in there, just to make sure. But they've been working with us. I wish all banks would do this. So, we ask that you agree to drop it to the $5,000. And again, that is to cover associated costs within the town of Enfield.
Yep.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I do have one question. I was just at that property recently. Did they give you any idea of when they're going to be moving those trailers that are out there, and the refrigerators that are on the side of the road? It really didn't look that great.
Come on up, Kristi, please. If you're okay with that, Matt. Thank you. Sorry. Don't want to overstep.
So, I drove by this morning. They actually dismantled two out of the three campers in the backyard. So, it is, a lot of the stuff that they took out is on the side of the road right now. They are just in the middle of removing all of that. I think they're just cleaning out the backyard first, and then they're removing it. So, that is something that is in one of the exhibits that are in the resolution, along with, as I drove by this morning, half of the front siding is off, because they're going to be replacing that. They're also fixing the garage roof. So, they said that they plan on having all their remaining items taken care of within the next two weeks. So...
Yeah, correct. I know some of the neighbors are pretty happy that some of the work is going on. But, they got to get those trailers out of there.
Yeah, I'll confirm with the attorney tomorrow morning.
Again, that's why it's part of this. She won't release any liens until she makes sure the work's done. Go ahead, John.
So, just want to point out for people who don't have the history, this property was first blighted in 2013, and it has been a problem in the neighborhood ever since. And this is what we are trying to avoid, because somebody has lived next to this house since 2013 in this condition, that, like, this is exactly what we're trying to prevent happening, that people should not have to live next to stuff like this, because it deteriorates the value of the neighbor's house, the quality of life for the people in the neighborhood. So, this is, I think everybody's relieved that this one is off of our agenda, and is in the hands of a really good, a good, I think he's a flipper, but he seems very committed to turning this house over and doing something nice with it. So...
All set? Thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine members in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing foreclosure of property maintenance fines at 88 Broadbrook Road. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the foreclosure of the property maintenance fines associated with the property maintenance lien recorded February 21, 2025, volume 2931, page 698, for the property at 88 Broadbrook Road. Date prepared 9/4/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
Still moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Okay, this is the property that is on Broadbrook Road. It's in front of Enfield Transit Mix, and this property has been a problem for 20-something years. Not these particular people, but these particular people bought it, and it's worse now than it was then. We have no communication with them. They have not showed up for the meetings, and nothing's getting done to rectify, if anything. It's more of a storage area for junk vehicles now. And so, we have no choice. This is the only avenue we have to try to make a change to that property. You agree, John?
Yes.
Thank you. Bob?
I totally agree. How many complaints have we received over 88 Broadbrook Road? Several. And this is long overdue.
Definitely. I think we're all in agreement. Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine members in favor, none against.
Next is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with the Capital Region Council of Governments. Resolved, the Enfield Town, the town of Enfield may enter into, with, and deliver to, the Capital Region Council of Governments any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved, that Matthew W. Koplner, as town manager of the town of Enfield, is authorized to direct, authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Enfield, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Date prepared 7/11/2025, prepared by Stephen M. Hall, Director of Emergency Management.
Still moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. And next, are there any items for discussion this evening? No. Okay, seeing none. Any other business proper to come before said meeting? Councilman Mangini.
I would like to bring forward a resolution reinstating the funds that the People for People Warming Center had requested. And the money for all nonprofits was taken out, and then, for many nonprofits, was put back, but not for People for People. And I know the argument has been mixing church with the town could lead to lawsuits, which is negated with our town attorney's opinion, that that is not a viable answer. And he did provide his legal opinion a couple of months back. So, as we approach the cold weather, they need this money more than ever. Attorney wrote that, you know, based on the facts, it's reasonable to conclude that the donation to the group, to People for People, to fund the Warming Center, and the church faith, will not result in a violation of the Establishment Clause. So, I respectfully request this council, do the right thing, do the compassionate thing, and let's put some money back, so we can at least help those in need. Thank you. So, I'm making a resolution request. Do I need a second for that?
You want to add something to the agenda?
Yes.
You need a second to add it to the agenda?
Okay.
There'll be a second. I second that.
Everybody in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Should we discuss? Go ahead. Look, this should be, this should go through leadership. It should be discussed in leadership and on the agenda if need be in the October meeting.
I tried that, it didn't work.
It didn't make it through leadership.
Okay.
Well, again, is there support? Bob?
Yeah.
And Cindy?
There's not support to put it on the agenda?
So, in closing, I will simply say, shame on all of you.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. My mic, I've been doing that all night with my mic. Any other business to come proper before said meeting? None? Public communication, would you, now you can come up and talk. Come on up.
No, her. She's been waiting patiently. Then you can come up, Dean.
Did she? Yeah.
Oh. I don't know what little deals you two got working out there, but...
Dean Goss, 151 Spring Street? We don't have any deals. We just discussed what was going on, and just agreed that Mike's idea about a flashing sign is a good one, and I would suggest one on each side of the road, so that it's obvious that that's a one-way. Because I've been affected by the same problem. And the arrow she's talking about was painted there by, of course, the Fourth of July. All that takes is a can of spray paint to cover it up. That should be pretty easy. And I think we pretty much agree that we'll try one thing, and if we need to escalate, we can escalate. But it is, I mean, it's a good reason that we have the problem. People wouldn't be there if it wasn't a good restaurant. And then I have one other thing that's not related. Part of what was discussed with the TIF was our impending riverfront, and utilizing it more. And I know often, there are people that are talking about the releases of raw sewage coming down at us from Massachusetts. And I would ask that Representative, Senator Santinella works with our representative, that I'm afraid to try her name from across the river, to implore Massachusetts to do something about it, and really put some pressure on them. As opposed to people that just get the reports, I am on the river. I've guided people down through the Enfield Rapids, people groups, and things like that. And even though it's probably not harmful to our health, what you see going down there is what you flush down your toilets and sinks and everything else. It is not pretty. And I just wanted to ask that you guys work together and try to put some pressure on Massachusetts to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean. Is the red light on, Lori?
It's not. Now it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So first, I would like to thank Lori for helping me out with this. I've never done this before. There are several people that don't ever do this. So you should always be a little patient with those who don't do this often. I would like to correct, respectfully correct you, Mr. Nelson. I've been a resident of Enfield for three years, not six months. And the driveway in question at the property I live at does accommodate multiple vehicles. It's just not being utilized that way because the upstairs neighbor was difficult. But again, it's not about the parking, it's about the wrong-way drivers. I am hearing a lot tonight about how you guys want to make Teaville beautiful. When I moved here, people were like, ew, you're moving to Teaville? That's the ghetto of Enfield. And I was like, ghetto? I'm from Willa Manic. I know what ghetto is, okay? And Teaville is not. Teaville is beautiful. And I love that the restaurants across the street, it's an amazing restaurant. If you want more businesses in this area, then fix the traffic, okay? It's going to become more congested with buses being put over here, you know? There's a, over by Kelly Fordette, what is that going to be? The train station possibly coming in or something? You guys want to bring more things into Teaville? Fix it first. Put the signs up. We live there. We don't want to get hit head-on when we're just trying to come home from our nine-to-five jobs. You know what I mean? So I would very much encourage you to listen to what I say because every night I have to listen to the neighbor across the street yell, "It's a one-way dumbass," over and over. And every time I check my cameras, wrong way, wrong way, wrong way, multiple times a day. It is unsafe. My daughter lives on Spring Street. My grandson lives on Spring Street. I don't want them hurt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Everybody good? All right, Councilman Communication. I would just ask, can we send those solar signs for Maple Ave to Public Safety and see if we can add them to one of the grants that we're currently applying for? Do we have support for that? Okay, that's a yes. And then as far as DEEP goes, with the sewage in the river, I understand it's a couple hundred years old problem and it's been happening. But it seems like lately, I, and I have to say, it seems like after, Mike, you dealt with a new sewer plant and you followed the loss and spent, what, $40 million or whatever the number was. Now all of a sudden, it's like Massachusetts doesn't care. I mean, the other day, they dumped over a million-plus gallons in the river and it didn't even rain. I, so it's like, this is just their easy way, eh, let's not treat it, let's just dump it because nobody's doing anything. So I have to say, I'm starting to see the frustration in the residents. And, you know, we do want to encourage the development of the riverfront, but we can't keep having this. And I remember when my father was young, he said he used to swim in the river. And when I was young, I was like, what? You're out of your mind. And then when I was in my twenties and thirties, I scuba dove in the river. It cleaned up beautiful, freshwater clams. It's like we're going backwards now. And I know, I know it's a tough, it's a tough battle for John Carroll, John Kissel, to take on. But, you know, I think this is more, this is bigger. Let's get, you know, where's Chris Murphy? I mean, he, let's get him going on this. Joe Courtney, Richard Blumenthal. I mean, this is a big issue. And I know they threatened us with fines. Am I correct, Mike? So, so now Enfield's dumping as clean as clean could be in the river. What good is it if the next town up and the town above that and above that is dumping sewage in? So I'm starting to get frustrated over this. And I do want to develop the riverfront. I want a pier. But who's going to fish off of it knowing that, oh, did they dump today? You know, what is that I caught on my fishing hook? You don't even want to ask. So I, and this isn't, I know, John, you've been digging into it, looking into it. This is not, I think it's a bigger issue than the state. Go ahead. That's the only two things I have.
Okay, so I just had two things. So first of all, Lori Davis, glad you came. And as I told you in my last email that we were going to bring this up tonight, and we did. And I'm glad that we did. The flashing signs was never something that we considered. So this was what was going to be discussed tonight. I do want to tell you, I don't think I ever saw your mail, your email from early May. I'm going to just be honest, not that you didn't send it, but it is very possible I never saw that. So I will apologize for that. But we have some answers here, and that was the intent. And I told you that that was going to happen. We just have not had a meeting since July. So I hope that there's some solutions that Public Safety can work through that will make things better. And we'll look at the sign if that's, if that's feasible. And hopefully that works. There's been a lot said about the sewage. And I would be more than happy to spend time talking about the sewage when it's not 11 o'clock at night. We had, I have been working with DEEP throughout the summer over this issue. There has been a number of misrepresentations that have been made that I have done nothing and that I don't care. That is not true. I have been working with DEEP, the U.S. Geological Survey, who is down there at the river every two weeks or every two months, testing the water, monitoring the river. I have worked with Congressman Courtney's office. I have communicated with our partners above, above the state lines to help, to help me understand what's going on with them. I just want you to know, this has already been in court. The EPA, the federal EPA, has settled a lawsuit with Holyoke and Chicopee. They are operating under consent orders, which allow them to continue to operate provided that they continue to make investments to mitigate their sewage. So that is the agreement that has been, that is in place. Now, we can, and we could talk about how you get, what you have to do to challenge any of that, but that's what's in place. The state of Massachusetts has actually been a party to that lawsuit. So Connecticut DEEP is in contact with them. The one thing that has changed, so you know, is that Massachusetts now requires the water pollution control agencies to notify people when there is a release. And so you can sign up and you get a notice on your phone that says there's a release. Now, I don't want to speak too much about this because I am not an expert in this. I don't know if there's a million-gallon release, if it's treated sewage, untreated sewage, stormwater. I have no idea. And I'm not going to make representations for them of what is going in there. But I can tell you that the, the people who have said that because of all of this, Long Island Sound is now in jeopardy, that is factually not true. Our own DEEP people and the EPA have all said Long Island Sound is improving and has constantly improved. So I am, I have been doing the work. But there have been some things that have been said that are completely factually not right. And I'd be more than happy to walk you through the presentation that all of us legislators got last Friday and share with you what, help you better understand the situation. And so I'm more than happy to do that, but not tonight.
I'm, and I said, I'm not, but I think this is a bigger issue. The lawsuit I was unaware of, so I appreciate.
So I'd be more than happy, and, and just a little bit of trivia, the, the DEEP commissioner is a woman named Emma Simino. She is the granddaughter of John Simino. She grew up here. She is very well aware of the challenges that we have had historically. And I have to tell you, to be able to pick up the phone and to talk to somebody from Enfield who understands this, I'm not talking to some disinterested person because she has family here, she cares very much about this town. Unlike many other people who were on these calls, who don't even know where Enfield is on a map, respectfully. So she has been an incredible asset to helping me. And I think maybe she can come up here and talk to us because I think that you would really enjoy her. And I think she would give you a really honest perspective. And I could ask, okay?
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? Everyone have a great night.